...by the Board. We will now hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. As per the Brown Act, public testimony on non-agenda items is not a conversation or dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for review and/or investigation. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics, not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you will be called to speak when we get to that subject matter item. Today, each non-agenda speaker will have two minutes to address the Board. Please remember, no referral of time is allowed. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. The lights are located directly in the front of the podium, on the dais, next to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Officer. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. I'm now going to call the names of those who signed up to speak in advance first and then any speaker slips that were submitted this afternoon. If I call your name, please come down to the podium and be ready to speak in the order I call you. So timely submissions, there are 10, and then there were four that were submitted later. So we have an order, Andrew Bailey, Lucia Pineda, Veronica Esparza, Laurel Mudd, Rose Eckerman, Francisca Salcedo, Lindsay Bosberg, Francine Maxwell, Citizen, and Anna Bonatati, and the four others will be Howard Frank, Richard Evolith, Colleen Andrews, and Cheryl Schnell. Starting from the top, in order, we'll take Andrew Bailey, who will be followed by Lucia, Veronica, Laurel, and Rose. Andrew, going once, going twice, Andrew Bailey. Andrew, it's not here. Lucia, Pineda, Veronica, Laurel, and Rose. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lucia Pineda, and I have been a Senior High Financial Clerk since 1998. Today, some of us Senior High Financial Clerks stand here before you to speak again regarding our reclassification efforts. In the past, Senior High Financial Clerks have requested reclassification reviews seven times since 1988. All of these requests were denied. In September of this year, three financial clerks and four of our school principals were interviewed by the Reclassification Committee regarding our most recent request. During this process, we financial clerks prove that we're working out of class and that our job description is no longer accurate. Our principals have confirmed this and understand as well as support our position on the matter. In the last year, the Senior High Financial Clerks have been receiving an unprecedented amount of procedures, emails, and circulars with additional and increased requirements asked of us. These documents provide us with the proof that what is expected of us is clearly not in our job description, nor is it relevant to our salary grade. In a previous reclassification appeal denial letter, the responses to our statements regarding increased responsibilities, duties, and accountabilities were so incongruent, it was clear that the staff reviewing our requests are not qualified to determine if we're working out of class or not. In the most recent denial letter, no explanations were provided for the denial decision, and none were provided upon our specific request to supply explanations. Once again, we stand before your request and adjust assessment of what it means to be a Senior High Financial Clerk. Once again, we urge you to take on this task with clarity and sound judgment. Above all, we implore the Board to give us the respect of providing an explanation as to their decision, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Lucia. Veronica, followed by Laurel. Laurel?
I'm Rose Eckerman. We're going to go based on our order that we have set up.
Thank you.
My name is Rose Eckerman. I'm a Senior High Financial Clerk. I have been with the district since 2001, and, I'm sorry, 2011. We are called Senior High Financial Clerks. The definition of a clerk is one who keeps records and performs general office duties. Traditionally, clerks perform duties such as provide general clerical support to the Finance Department, perform general clerical duties to include typing, photocopying, faxing, mailing, and filing, issues receipts, sort and file documents, coordinate and maintain records for the Finance Department. The following job descriptions have been collected from various sites defining different roles in financial organizations. A financial clerk is someone who governs many different financial transactions. These individuals primarily perform administrative work. They help keep records, help customers, and carry out financial transactions. Bookkeepers involve more in data collection and entries. Accountants are more often involved in preparing and presenting financial statements and fulfilling advisory and consulting roles. Accountants have become business strategists, ultimately involved in guiding the operations of a business as we report to the principal, the Finance Department, the Budget Department, the CFO, and all other departments in the district. The Senior High Financial Clerks have a level of accountability, responsibility, and fiduciary duty that is not generally required of a traditional financial clerks. We are not financial clerks. Our actual duties and responsibility clearly fall under an accountant category. I will give you a background. I am a CPA. I have worked for various extremely large private corporations. I was a CFO myself. I had over 125 employees below me. I had staff accountants, I had senior accounts, as well clerical staff.
Thank you.
Okay.
So do we have Veronica?
I'm Veronica. Yeah, hello. I'm Veronica Esparza. I've been a financial clerk for about two and a half years now, and I really wish that the job description would have been accurate or at least representative of what we actually do, because at that point, I would have been able to really have an educated decision whether or not I would have taken on that position or not. That position is highly responsible, highly elevated responsibility, highly accountable. We are just as financially responsible as the principals of the different school sites, and when we are audited by external auditors such as the grand jury investigation that happened with SCPA in 2010, you know, the financial clerks are just as responsible for the fiduciary duties as you all are, as the principals are, and we feel that we are at the school site level. But we're not being recognized, that's not being recognized in our job description. Nowhere in our job description does it say anywhere the accountability, the responsibility that we have, and the fiduciary duties that we are entrusted with every single day. I'll just read really quick. Traditional financial clerks are not required to be skilled in the following areas, which we all are: accounting principles, we do the full accounting cycle, not just bits and pieces. We are everything, the accounts payable, the accounts receivable, everything we do: the fundamentals of accounting, the tax law, QuickBooks, exceptional Excel skills, we have to do the point-of-sale system, webpage design. I mean, I can go on and on in everything that we do, but I would like to see the position description corrected to show the fiduciary duties and responsibilities and the high accountability that we have that is evident in all the external auditor reports that we have and that you all have to respond to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Veronica. Ms. Mudd?
I am Laurel Mudd. I'm a Senior High Financial Clerk as well. We implore you to override the decision to deny our reclassification request. Acknowledge that in the last 15 years since our job description was last updated, that our duties, responsibilities, and accountability have increased by at least 50 percent. Please acknowledge that the term clerk does not accurately reflect our current job duties and responsibilities. Acknowledge that our job description is almost identical to that of an accountant I won in the SDUSD Finance Department, and yet are a much higher salary grade. They are. The financial clerks currently have a salary grade of 35 and hourly rate of Step 1 is $19.49, $19.49. For comparison purposes, a school clerk at Step 5 is $19.01. School librarian, Technician 1, at Step 5 is $19.97. For example, senior financial clerks barely make more than a school clerk who takes attendance, less than a library tech, less than a school clerk 2 who is a receptionist. None of these jobs have the level of accountability, workload, or responsibility to the Administration, Fiscal, and Audit Departments, as well as Athletics, CIF, and the State Board of Equalization. Please explain to us why this is equitable. Please acknowledge that we are accountants. Clerk is undermining and demeaning, and thank you in advance for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. We have Francisca Salcedo, Lindsay, Francine, followed by Citizen, and Anna. Francisca Salcedo, going once. Yes, thank you. No? Twice. Lindsay. Francine, you're up. Thank you.
Francine Maxwell, it's too cold in here today. This is my morale booster, Part 2. I received some feedback from my partners in District E, and the teaching staff didn't really care for my "caught being good" card. So they would prefer that the district, the trustees, have a conversation. Random acts of kindness. So I'll highlight two random acts of kindness that was brought to my attention this past week. There was a student in District E that came to school with inappropriate clothing, and so when the teacher took the leadership role and pulled that child to the side and asked him why they were inappropriate, they said there was no clean laundry at home. So the teacher went to their car, who had just picked up their laundry, and they gave that student something to wear. So that would be where the student would have access to walk to the office, grab this card, and it says "Deliver to," open it, and just write that teacher a note to let him know how special they are, and to let that teacher know what a difference you made for my school experience. Secondly, in District E, a teacher, she buys cases, although I don't like it, of cup of noodles, being that it's cold and students have to wait for their rides, their parents work two jobs to keep the lights on, so some parents can't get their child right at the time it's time. This teacher opens up her classroom, she gives them a cup of noodle soup that keeps them warm and cozy until their parent can come get them. So she goes that extra mile to be that parent in those hours. So I just want like for us to again remember that we need to do something about morale. Everybody counts. Everybody's important. So let's make that a real push for 2017, 2018 school year, that we're able to recognize each other, let everybody know that you are important, that we all appreciate you, and just let's change our narrative. District E has some wonderful things, and I would just like some help from this Board on the daisies to push that narrative.
Thank you. Citizen?
The United States Department of Education Office of Civil Rights is meeting with district leaders this week, tomorrow, I believe. OCR determined after an interview with Andrew Donovan that San Diego Unified needs to train staff to ensure that laws are adhered to. This memo is posted on the district website, I think it's April. Since then, another seven complaints have been filed with the Office of Civil Rights. Children do not lose the protections of laws because they walk through the school doors. An example of the violations of civil rights would be the Horton School incident, in which corporal punishment was used by the principal for four days. The public deserves a complete report on the Office of Civil Rights meeting. Why are they coming here? What are the issues? And what is the district response to that? There's a very important reason the Office of Civil Rights is coming to this school district, and the public deserves to know why.
Thank you. Anna?
Hi.
Bonatati?
Hello again. I'm here because of the NAC or the International Centers. As we are approaching the middle of the year, I imagine that the district is looking at changes for the next year, according to the toolkit which is being passed out to you that's posted on the district website, which is where I got that. I got lost. Recruiting highly qualified teachers is essential to improving instruction for these students. The teachers should possess an ESL or a bilingual specialized credential or endorsement, not a English single subject as the program requires. Additionally, ongoing high-quality professional development is also suggested. This takes time to plan and implement, and the planning should be happening now. You'll notice that the current PD schedule that we currently have from Ola provides very little PD for ELD teachers who are responsible for the lesson delivery. I myself have been to two. I urge you to rethink the current model and reinstate the previous model that was designed with the kids' best interest at its core. You have a celebration of light scheduled for tomorrow, and you're doing great things with PR, but why not do something that really supports those kids, our newest arrivals, so that they get the kind of instruction and the kind of environment they need that would keep them feeling safe and be able to progress? Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Howard Frank, Richard Evolith, Colleen Andrews, and Sherry Schnell. So Howard?
Thank you. I'm speaking because I heard that the school board has either made a decision or is considering making a decision to no longer install artificial turf fields and to try to go back to grass. With all due respect to those who feel that way, I submit that such a decision would be ill-advised. I have been a volunteer at La Jolla High School since 1988, mostly in matters related to athletics. In the late '90s, specifically 1998, 99, 99, La Jolla High School was looking for a solution to the terrible condition of its athletic field. I was part of a group to travel to Portland, Oregon with former Principal Dana Shelburne, former Athletic Director Rick Evolith, and Landscape Supervisor from San Diego Unified, Mark Everett. We looked at a number of fields and concluded that the only solution to the problem was artificial turf, and we decided far and away the best artificial turf was field turf. Accordingly, in 2000, field turf was installed on the athletic field at La Jolla High School. In 2004, field turf was installed on the high school softball field. The Muirlands Middle School is located directly across the street from La Jolla High School. In 1981, the size of its athletic field was doubled so that a baseball field could be built for La Jolla High School, who had no home athletic field, no baseball field. Since that time, the field at Muirlands has really been a high school athletic field on a middle school campus. In 2006, a baseball clubhouse was built on that field and was dedicated to the memory of a former La Jolla High School student who was a victim of the 9/11 Twin Towers tragedy in New York. At that time, the athletic field was in such terrible shape, it was in danger of being condemned due to insufficient water, minimal maintenance, and primarily 1,100 kids taking PE on the field every day, and the use of that field by the baseball, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. Oh, no.
Finish your statement, Frank. I mean, Howard, yeah.
If I can have another 30 seconds, I'll talk fast.
Finish your statement.
The field was a disaster. Former Board Member John DeBeck was at that dedication, and he urged me to try to get field turf installed on that field. Former Superintendent Bill Koba walked the field with me shortly thereafter, and he completely embraced the concept of field turf on that field. I'm mindful, my last sentence, I'm mindful that there have been some that have voiced concerns about the black pellets and possible health risks. And I'm here to tell you that I have looked into this matter. There have been over 60 or 70 studies, and there has not been one peer study published that has linked any health issues to the black rubber pellets.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Evolith, and I am the former Athletic Director and with the district for 34 years at La Jolla High School. I'm piggybacking on what Howard said, but primarily looking at it from an Athletic Director's standpoint of the safety of the field and the costs that are generated, grass versus field turf. La Jolla was the first school to put in artificial turf, and at that time, it was due to safety issues and community issues. We had a young man who had broken his leg, and the district was ready to condemn the field at that time. So we searched for and found something to be much safer. We looked at studies, and those studies concluded that field turf was much, much safer than grass. The district looked at it from a financial standpoint, and one thing that was evident to them, it would save 900,000 gallons of water per year per field. So it made common sense to do it. The field pays for itself. Safety-wise, there are study after study that shows that field turf is much safer. SCNFL, SNC2A schools, they all verify that. The first year we put it in, I asked our trainers for the next two years to keep a log of injuries. We went from having four to five knee injuries per year on an inadequate field to one bad ankle over two years. No knee injuries, no ankle injuries. Same thing with our visitors, our visiting schools that came to play. This was in football, same thing. No knee, no ankle. So I encourage the district to think about keeping it. I agree with Howard that there have been no significant studies that validated some alleged claims about being unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Colleen, and then our last speaker, Sherry.
Hello. My name is Colleen Andrews, and I've been with the school district for about 32 years. And my purpose here today might seem a little reactionary, but it's actually, I'm coming here to hopefully in a proactive light. On the news this morning, there was a story about how the school district is considering cutbacks and layoffs, and a variety of things based on the teachers' pay raise, it's a 4% pay raise. My concern is, is that our school district, at this point, teachers' jobs have gotten a lot harder. We're already stressed, not stressed, but pushed to the point of where we're not working with all that we can. In my opinion, I believe the cuts should come at the top, where the managers and department heads just got a 7% increase in pay compared to our four, and that's where the cuts should be coming from or reevaluate it. The cuts coming from the bottom is, what it's doing is, it's, sorry, I'm very nervous, it's affecting our children, because we already are limited to what we can do and how we can do it, because we don't have the money there. So we don't have the materials we need, we don't have the staff we need, we have hit bottom, in my opinion. And I would just like to put that out there, that in the beginning of the year, I know it's, we're waiting for the governor's, so I understand that, you know, there's a bigger picture, and we're waiting for him to come back with what he's going to give us and how much money we have, but I just want to kind of put that out there, that we're already feeling a little stressed about it. So, and I just wanted to bring that out, to make it known. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Sherry? Sherry Schnell?
Hi. My name is Sherry Schnell. I have two daughters in the Kumeya Elementary School, which is in the Sarah Cluster. And I wanted to start out by talking about the day after the election, and I, like many parents and community members here in California, was really shocked and deeply concerned the day after the election about what was going to happen to our civil rights and our environment in this country. And I took the day off work, and I spent the day volunteering at my daughter's classroom in Kumeya, and it was the best thing I could have done, because the people in that community, the students, the teachers, really restored my faith in our country. And they are absolutely amazing, and we have a bright future because of them. And it really reinvigorated my desire to be involved in our public schools and to advocate for education, because the one thing that came out of that election is how important education is, because we need an educated public, and an educated public would make different decisions than what the Electoral College is going to make, I believe. Following that, there were two bad things that happened that I wanted to talk to the Board about. And the first one is I learned that San Diego Unified retroactively paid $188,821 to DLA Piper, a law firm that is not in desperate need of cash. And I don't know a lot about education, that's not my profession. I do know a lot about law firm investigations, that is my profession. I started out working at a law firm, not unlike DLA Piper, and I work in the biotech industry in compliance, and so I hire outside law firms to do a lot of investigations. And so I know how that works. And the way that works is, you tell a law firm, "You've got $40,000." They've got $40,000. They don't go over that, because they know that if they do, they're not getting paid. So I urge you to please let us know, let the public know what happened in that situation so that we can have trust in this school board and how they're handling our money, and that it's really going to our students, because I've been here enough talking about how our school sites don't have enough money for books and for scholastic news and for the resources that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. This completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the Board and the Superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call December 13, 2016, regular meeting to order with all Board members present. The Army JROTC color guard from Crawford High School will now present the colors. Please rise for the presentation of colors. My pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. If you wish to address the Board on any of the agenda items before the Board today, and your name is not on the speaker list printed on the blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony, please complete the form and submit to Cheryl Ward, Board Action Officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker request will be accepted by the Board. Board bylaw 1025 provides that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the Board on an item, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. Item B3, trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Introduce the panelists.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Today, we're in for a treat. That was Crawford from District E that just left, and now MTN, Millennial Tech Middle School, is here to perform for us. There's the principal, Willie, coming in. Willie Neils coming in with their teacher, Vlad Begata, I think I got it right. And they have some exciting students here who will perform for us. So listen attentive. Thank you.
One, two.
Someday at Christmas, men won't be boys, playing with bombs like kids play with toys. When warm December, our hearts will see a world where men are free. Someday at Christmas, there'll be no wars, when we have learned what Christmas is for, when we have found what life's really worth, there'll be peace on earth. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives. Someday I'll walk through the misty night, maybe not until we're together, but we're gonna be friends for the rest of our lives.
Well done. I'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda with Section I. Superintendent's consent agenda to be considered following the adoption of the agenda enacted on next. So moved.
Second.
And please note that G7, the annual organization of the Board of Education, will be heard after the conclusion of all other items on the agenda. So is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Votes have been cast.
I'll move Item I, the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
But I'll pull Item I1, Field Trips. Item I42, Disclosure of District Investments and Cash on Hand for Quarter Ending September 30, 2016.
Any other items?
There's one other item that should come off the consent agenda, and that is Item I38.
So 1, 38, and 42 come off. Okay? And then those will be presented at the, at the end. Any, all in favor, cast your votes. Close, push the red button. All buttons have been pushed, it is unanimous. Are there any reportable actions reported out from the closed session at this time?
Yes, thank you. The board voted 5-0 to approve signing onto an amicus brief in the case entitled Gloucester County School Board versus CG. It's U.S. Supreme Court case number 16-273. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Martin, are there any administrative assignments? Report out.
Thank you, President McCrory. There's two management appointments this evening. The site Special Education Administrator for Area 4, Jennifer Hooger Hyde, and interim Chief of Police Services, Mike Marquez.
At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what is going on at your school, both academically and socially. We'll start with Savannah Orth, ASB president, I-High Virtual Academy, and continue with Flynn Steele, ASB president, Scripps Ranch High School. Savannah?
Hi, I attend I-High, which is a pretty atypical school. We do half in-person, half online classes. Students have the opportunity to both attend online or attend in-person, and then there's a lab open that's continually all the time, so students can receive any assistance that they might need on things that are either online or in-person. And they can also come in and work and have that period of time to work. Our ASB has had to come up with some new ideas in order to work on publicizing events or on planning events. Since we have a very small school, we only have about 30 full-time students, though we do have a lot more dual enrollment students throughout the district. But the thing that's made it tough for our ASB is that the school number, the number of students who are there on any given day fluctuates, and so we've had to figure out some new ways to make that work, as in, on days, three times, once a month, we have a binder day, you turn in your work, and ASB has tried to plan events on those days. We've worked with Father Joe's and done Serving Food, Habitat for Humanity. Last year, we did several box lunch pack-ups. And then in the next couple months, we have another, the Martin Luther King Food Drive, which happens every year, as well as a couple things, like, we're trying to organize professional photos taken, because our school is so small. We are not currently able to do that, especially for senior portraits, so we're working on that. And with increased community outreach and a more detailed school wellness plan, so that's I-High, and thank you.
Savannah, an excellent report. Flynn?
Hello. I'm Flynn Steele, and I'm ASB president at Scripps Ranch High School. Over the course of the last couple months at Scripps Ranch High School, we've worked through Anti-Bullying Month to bring in guest speaker Kevin Lau, who came and spoke to a portion of our students. Our theater department put on a play that had to do with anti-bullying themes to another portion of the students. In the fall, we worked to bring back homecoming floats for the first time in multiple years. We are starting site modernization this month at Scripps Ranch that will go through 2019, that will include a new, a new building, and that will do away with some of the old bungalows. Over the course of this holiday season, we at Scripps Ranch have hosted a food drive and a toy drive that have raised a lot of food and toys for underprivileged people. And the staff have separately funded Operation Happy Holidays, where seven students' families will receive holiday gifts that have been completely funded by our teachers. Over 400 students are currently enrolled in college classes here at, on campus at Scripps Ranch, and under our amazing leadership, our school is maintaining high standards, rigor in the classroom, and achieving academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Flynn. Excellent work. Superintendent Martin, please provide your information report.
Thank you, President McCrory. I want to talk about our event tomorrow night. Based on the board resolution last week and some work going forward, we are organizing a community-wide event inviting all students, their families, community members, and participating organizations to come and be a part of a celebration of light, bringing a message to our entire community that our students matter, that our schools are warm and welcoming places. And I can think of no better organization than the school district to bring our community together today, and all days. But tomorrow night in particular is a way that we galvanize our community support around sending messages that you so clearly stated in our board resolution last night as a board, about what we're about, what we've always been about, and what we'll continue to be about. It's important that our students know who we are, and it's important that we come together as one big, broad community. Each and every student that's part of our district has a light, has a gift that they are meant to give and to bring to the world, and it's our job to nurture that and to, when you use the analogy of a light and a candle and the wind, when the winds are blowing hard, we protect so that candle and that light continues to shine, and we want to celebrate that, and this is the time to do that. It's not just one event, it's, it's galvanizing all of the people that are interested, and we know that based on tomorrow night's event, many school districts are involved, other organizations are involved, that there will be further events out in the communities as our partners participate with us. There are many organizations that have already agreed and want to be a part of it. I want to thank the participating partners for tomorrow's event, including the ACLU, the United Way of San Diego, the Cesar Chavez Service Clubs, the Interfaith Center for Workers' Justice in San Diego County, the San Diego Unified Council of PTA, San Diego Organizing Project, the Ocean Discovery Institute. I hope our students and families are listening to how many groups are about supporting students right now who, after the most divisive election that we have seen, should know that a community can come together. Continuing supporters, continuing the list, San Diego Education Association, the California Endowment, the Califor, the Council of American Islamic Relations, San Diego Pride, the Association for School Administrators, AASD, the San Diego Community College District, Parents, Families, Friends of Lesbian and Gays, the P-Flag, San Diego County Building Trades Union, California Charter School Association, and the California School Employees Association. And that's just, that's, those are the ones I'm naming, many, many more organizations. It took one phone call to say, this is what we're about. Would you like to come together and join us? I know people have heard us talk over and over again that our vision for San Diego Unified, our Vision 2020, is to maintain quality schools in every neighborhood, and what we want our families to know, that our schools are not just high-quality, our schools are warm, and they're welcoming. And we believe this is the right time. We understand, we've heard from students that they're scared, they're concerned, and this event is about letting every single boy and girl in San Diego know that they're welcome and that we want them in our schools. And we're looking forward to tomorrow night. We see it as a wonderful event for families who can come, families can come. We will have information, an information booth's available, and it's an invitation. It's an important information to share, but we want to make sure our families see this also as an invitation to participate with us and to be one giant San Diego coming-together, arms-length around our students. So we look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow night. It starts at 4:00 p.m. at the San Diego Ballard Center. This is being planned by our Office of Family and Community Engagement, of course, that's what a family and community engagement office, a key, a key role that they play, starting at 4:00, of course, after school. We don't want any kids missing schools, missing school time for this, and all the information will be there. I also want to thank the LGBTQ Pride Marching Band, who is going who is going to provide music. And we look forward to this warm and wonderful event tomorrow night, and welcome everybody to join us.
Thank you. Each Board member will now have an opportunity to speak and share information if they wish. And I'll begin to my left with Trustee Sharon Whitehurst.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, Chair. I'd like to say, first of all, that I do think... I thank MTN for this today because we tried last spring, and we finally brought them in today. So I'm glad they came in, and we're so excited to have them here today. And Crawford was here with the color guard, but I also attended a play there... I mean, a talent show there on a week ago Friday. And it was an amazing event with Shotgun Tom. Some of you may remember him, and Ken Kramer there as judges. So that was a fascinating event, and I applaud efforts by the school to really engage the students. They were excited about it. They were in their improved facility, so we were excited about that. And then lastly, I just want to make a note about Lincoln, where the PTO, I understand, is looking for volunteers from their parents and grandparents to greet the students daily. And I'd like to highlight Porter. This morning, I was at Porter Elementary School, and The Rock was there to grant the wishes of an entire class. And children had indicated via a letter that they needed a couch at home, or... So three couches were given away, two or three table sets, and mattresses, and backpacks, and clothes. And it was really exciting to see the parents there and the school embraced by that larger community of The Rock. So I want to say thank you to them, to the principal, to all of the staff there at that school, and to all of our schools, and wish them well during this holiday season. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. The city and the school district are always trying to work together. We have a lot of joint use programs. And last week, I was testifying at City Council about the University City Community Plan, because this has an effect on our schools. There was a proposal to remove widening Genesee Avenue and taking a bridge and a major thoroughfare off the community plan, which was developed during the time that was... we believed that progress was paving everything over. However, we have Rose Canyon, which all five of our schools, University City and some in Claremont, are actually using as a living laboratory to go down and learn about our environment. And so this was a great opportunity to talk about the safety of our kids at school. We're talking about neighborhood schools, which means we want them to be walkable and bikeable. And so if they have to cross major intersections or don't have proper safety for bikes, that's not possible. And so with the concurrence of the City Council, we're able to remove those projects from the community plan and keep our schools safer. I know we have a lot of public comment here sometimes. At that particular council meeting, there were 200 people to speak, so they each had one minute. And it was kind of interesting because most of the time, only about half of the council members were sitting there when we were speaking because they got a little bit worn out by the whole thing. But in the end, they prevailed and voted the right way, so we appreciate that.
Trustee, Vice President Burr?
Yeah, thank you, President McCrory. And I just want to thank Superintendent Martin for, again, working with our staff to organize the Celebration of Light tomorrow night. Alliance San Diego and San Diego Labor Council are two other organizations that are helping to sponsor this. And I know in the last... this week and last week alone, there are a number of school districts that have or are planning to pass resolutions similar to the one that we passed last week. I know that Sweetwater High School District, Chula Vista Union School District, Southwestern College, the County Board of Education, and I believe the San Diego Community College District, all have either passed resolutions or I think a couple might be doing it tonight. So this is definitely a joint effort of school districts and community college districts throughout our county.
Thank you, President McCrory. Just a couple things. First, I attended a conference, a CTA conference over the weekend, focused on helping to make our schools safer and more inclusive with our LGBT students. That's an annual conference that started in 2010. And so it was great to attend that conference, again, with a lot of other teachers and counselors and school psychologists and some other school board trustees from throughout the state of California. That was a great experience. And then the second thing I just wanted to share was... last night, I was at a meeting of the Rainbow Lions Club, which is the first openly gay Lions Club. And we're focusing and working our efforts at trying to help support schools and children as well with, you know, visibility concerns and issues. And there's a lot of families in need that can't afford to get vision checks for their children or glasses. And so we're working towards trying to establish some relationships with San Diego Unified Schools to try to provide services and glasses for a lot of kids in need. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like all... I'd like to also highlight two events that I participated in last week and this week with organizations from near and far. The organization near was with the Point Loma Optimus Club, Breakfast Today. They honored the Dewey Elementary School with a check for $20,000 to support their STEAM program. And it's not the first check that they've donated Dewey. It's the second check. The first check was for more than $20,000. So this is an organization at Point Loma supporting their local school, acknowledging the good work that they're doing with not only helping them to establish a program, but providing the additional funding to maintain it. The experience they had with guests from afar was with the Chinese Navy, was here in the San Diego Harbor. We had three ships who were on a friendship cruise. They went from Auckland, Australia, to San Diego and then on their way to Canada. And while they were here for a few days, they selected Barnard Asian Pacific Language Academy to visit. So we had Admiral Wu and 15 or 16 officers, along with their Chinese diplomatic corps, come to visit our school in the Mission Bay Cluster. And I had a chance to observe our students learning their Chinese Mandarin, as well as they then provided an assembly where we had an opportunity to see Chinese art and culture demonstrated. So friends from near and far providing support for our local schools. We'll now hear Item E1, Vision 2020, Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood, Report on Quality Leadership, Teaching, and Learning. And it's the LCAP Goal Number One. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you, President McCrory. I'm having staff come up to join me, our HR staff and leadership and learning staff, to present this important item on Vision 2020, our accountability report when we talk about quality teaching, leadership, and learning. We also will have Lindsay Berningham joining us for part of this presentation. So she's approaching. As everybody gathers, I want to put a frame around it, the importance of this being one of our LCAP goals, that quality schools in every neighborhood is based on Vision 2020's report saying that we don't have a quality school without having quality leadership and quality teaching inside of our schools. And so how does... how do we manifest this and deliver on the promises that we've made in our LCAP? And tonight, we're going to report specifically on our efforts to recruit, retain, and develop, build capacity of our employees and our teaching staff in particular, but all employees. And so recruitment, development, capacity building, and retention is critical to be able to ensure quality staff at our school. So tonight, we're going to be presenting specifically on quality teaching. And you'll be also hearing about the strong partnership that we're having with San Diego Education Association and as we revise our approach to teacher growth and development. So tonight, the update will include our teacher pipeline implementation, our teacher effectiveness implementation, our Transformational Leadership Academy, and our teacher career pathways. And I probably just did your first slide, so you can just skip that one and keep on going. But that's the overview. And as you can see, the team is ready to begin our overview this evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and school board members. We have a number of staff...
Can you introduce yourselves? I didn't introduce each of you, but Tim Esfazador...
Tim Esfazador, Chief HR Officer.
Acacia Thede, Executive Director of HR.
Wendy Rank Burr, Instructional Support Officer, Office of Secondary Schools.
Diane Cordero, Director of Teacher Preparation and Support.
Erin Houston, HR Director.
Jim Solo, Executive Director of Leadership and Learning.
Thank you, Tim.
So as you can see, we have a number of people from a different... a very diverse group of departments in our organization. It takes more than just the HR department to bring onboard quality staff. And so that's why we have a number of people up here that... to talk about the kind of work that they're doing this year to actually reach our goal of having a diverse staff, a staff that reflects the diversity of our students. Our presentation is going to provide an overview of the immediate and developing plans that we are implementing to meet and sustain our diversity and quality staffing goals. Acacia's going to talk a little bit right now about our... the development of the teacher pipeline.
Actually, Erin's going to first talk about our commitment to this work. The teacher workforce is the lifeblood of any educational system. Without a core of highly effective teachers who are able to serve all students well, schools simply cannot achieve their ultimate purpose of creating an educated citizenry. The district is committed to proactively combating the recruitment issues associated with the nationwide teacher shortage to ensure high-quality teachers are in every school. Across the country, the driving factor in teacher shortages continues to be teacher attrition. In addition, workforce growth due to lower class sizes adds to the shortage. Retention of effective teachers ensures the district can obtain the Vision 2020 goal of ensuring a quality school in every neighborhood. The September 2016 report by the Learning Policy Institute discusses retention of teachers based on their working conditions. In this study, teachers state the working conditions, such as class size, competent and supportive leadership, a school's testing and accountability environment, and teacher autonomy, are all significant factors in ensuring teachers remain in their schools and their communities. The district's commitment to induction, peer assistance and review, and leadership development all support the retention of effective teachers and leaders. Data from a 2015 review by the National Center of Education Statistics shows that the well-quoted data of 50% of teachers leaving after five years has now changed. This study shows that only 17% of teachers leave after five years. This study also shows that 86% of teachers who were assigned a first-year mentor remained in the profession. The district's commitment to induction is one of the reasons why we retain 93% of our teachers. And to update the board and the community on the teacher development work that we're doing, we have very enthusiastically taken on this work for the last two and a half years. And we have... we just presented to the board and to the community in February, so some of this information is very similar to what you heard. But we still have commitments to national recruitment. That's a short-term goal for us and a short-term mandate because we're still combating low enrollment in university programs that aren't graduating a lot of candidates. And in turn, they're also not... still haven't made any significant changes in the number of diverse candidates graduating from those programs. Therefore, we still have a short-term strategy for national recruitment. We have continued to build our university partnerships, which allows us early access to candidates. So we basically have... are tried to have first shot at candidates who meet our goals for diversity and cultural proficiency. We have developed partnerships with the military that increase our numbers of diverse candidates. That's also a short- and long-term strategy. We are offering employment contracts early, also another pipeline strategy. We are working with our San Diego Education Fund to recruit our own candidates, our own San Diego Unified students, to have the long-term pipeline. We have improved and continue to improve our recruitment, hiring, and marketing practices. And we have our partnership with the San Diego Education Association to monitor the implementation of the pipeline through the Teacher Advisory Committee. We know that the establishment of the internal pipeline is one of the most vital elements of the sustainability of creating this pipeline. And so the concepts around this type of program include some of the things that we shared with you before. Educators Rising Clubs, which Diana's going to talk about in a little bit, CCT Pathways, these are programs that our own San Diego Unified students can participate in, learn about the teaching profession, and build that early interest in so that we can then capture their interest early, get them into scholarship opportunities, like through the San Diego Education Fund, and have them enter into the profession. So an example is that these experience could... of students in Educators Rising or CCT Pathways could potentially lead to direct connections to universities and community colleges that may provide for things like guaranteed admission or supports during their schooling. Our partnerships with the San Diego Teacher Academy and the San Diego Education Fund do make these types of pipelines possible. So for instance, the San Diego Education Fund scholars are our own San Diego graduates. They obtain their degree in credential. They have a guarantee of employment if they meet the standards established within the system. The San Diego Teacher Academy is a new partnership that we signed this summer, and it is going to be evolving. And Wendy's going to speak about that as soon as I let her do that. That takes our San Diego graduate, provides them in-class teaching experiences as well as mentoring and support throughout their BA program. Their undergraduate experience and schooling then lead them directly into our programs in the district. And I'll turn it over to Wendy to give an update.
So the purpose of the San Diego Teacher Academy partnership is to allow us to recruit our own students, many of whom have expressed through their college promise essays the desire to become teachers. So we want to tap into that desire and help to build our own future teachers from our student population and also allow us to recruit employees in our district who may aspire to be teachers themselves. So they will be working in our district in positions of supporting students, such as avid tutors would be one example, while at the same time earning first their associate's degree and then on to their bachelor's degree, then ultimately enrolling into an intern program supported by our district. And our goal is to finally graduate those students and hopefully employ them in our school and have them be fully credentialed and debt-free. So that is our work in San Diego with the San Diego Teacher Academy. And we are currently working with local college and university partners, so we'll have updates for you as we progress.
So the other piece that we want to talk a little bit about is our commitment to identifying strategic employment opportunities and marketing program. It takes time and resources to develop, and we have been doing that over these last couple of years as we've been implementing the process. The district... we... one thing that we want to focus on is capitalizing on the collective voices of the more than 14,000 people that already work in our district to help us meet these goals. And so the focus of our programs by recruiting our own high school students, getting the word out to our own employees, that is a lot of marketing that we can do that's fairly simple because we have an audience with a support and an intention around making this district the best that it can be. And it also helps us reach our diversity goals because our goal is to have our teaching staff reflect our students, and they are students that we're recruiting. So we've spent these last two years developing a sustainable foundation that we believe is very important to maintaining this pipeline. One of the things that's important to know is we've made gains in trying to diversify our resource despite the odds that we mentioned before. So for instance, in 2011, 69% of our teachers were white. This year, 66% of our new hires were white, which demonstrates that over time, our focused efforts can help narrow the diversity gap despite the odds. We have, again, a timeline for you to look at. It's immediate and ongoing is what we referred to earlier. Early recruitment through university partnerships and national recruitment, that serves an immediate need to hire teachers right now for vacancies that we have. Long-term are the topics that we've discussed that have to do with the development of the pipelines... pipeline, excuse me. Re-establishing the district internship programs, maintaining, building, and strengthening our university partnerships, and to have our students completing these pipelines that we're building and then being hired by the district and providing that support in the interim to make sure that they make it from seniors in high school to first-year teachers and beyond.
So one logical strategy to having our teaching and employment staff reflect our communities and our schools is to recruit from our own communities and schools. And so to that end, we are working on promoting and building our Educators Rising student... so to that end, we are working on promoting and building our Educators Rising Student Clubs at our high schools. Educators Rising is a national organization, and they, their purpose is to cultivate highly skilled educators by guiding young people on a path to becoming accomplished teachers, beginning in high school and extending through college and on into the profession. So starting with high school students, they provide passionate young people with authentic opportunities to experience teaching, sustain their interest in the profession, and help them cultivate the skills they need to be successful educators. In high school, Educators Rising supports curricular programs where students explore the teaching profession and gain hands-on teaching experience. Some of the activities that these clubs have done, and some of the ways we're trying to promote these clubs, is by expanding them through our CCTE Child Development and Education Pathways. We have clubs at Sarah, Crawford, Hoover, Scripps Ranch, Morse, Point Loma High Schools, and Hoover and Scripps are new this year. We're working still to create participation and excitement for the programs, building capacity from five to eight of our high schools. Some schools have deadlines for clubs. The goal is, again, to build excitement, perhaps recruit some of our Teacher of the Year candidates, the teachers that the students connect to most, to become club advisors or lead associates of the club, again, where students can connect a teaching career into something positive. We also held a Fun Run Walk on November 12th. We had increased our participation to over 100. And again, this was to build excitement and to raise fund for the school programs. The, actually, the most exciting event that's going to happen this school year is that San Diego Unified has partnered with Cuamaca College, San Diego State, and Project Tomorrow to create a Student Workshop Conference at San Diego State on February 3rd. And so this conference is a professional-type conference where students actually get to help design some of the workshops and participate in the workshops. But they will be attending a conference like the grownups do, where they have a keynote speaker, a breakfast. They attend workshops that are focused on elementary, secondary education, STEM in the classroom, special education, and all different types of teaching programs that are available to them. And so we're very excited to be able to participate and actually host not only our own San Diego Unified Students, but also students from neighboring districts as well, to build a community partnership where we're tied with local universities and colleges to, to build interest in the teaching profession.
So that leads us into how do we retain great teachers when we get them? So when we had our last teacher negotiations a year and a half ago, we realized that we didn't not have a new teacher evaluation system, and we couldn't even think in the room. We know it's at least more than 30 years, perhaps more than 35 years. So part of that teacher's contract was written in to actually have a collaboration between SDEA and the district to start looking at what a new teacher evaluation system might look at, look like. And so we have been working with the county over the last year and a half, and we're really focused on a teacher growth model, an educator growth model. So educators can grow over time, looking at the areas of deficit or need, and be fully supported by the district as they grow and continue to grow throughout their career. And to show that collaborative spirit, I'd like to invite the SDA President Lindsay Berningham up, who's going to go through the process of E3 with me. Kind of, she'll start from the beginning. Where did we start? Three years, a year and a half ago. And then I'll finish off where we are today and where we're going forward. Lindsay.
So we've joined the E3 process, which is facilitated by the San Diego County Office of Education. And through that, their facilitation has been a huge help and a huge assistance to both of our teams, and have helped, I think, to move us along the process. Through the facilitation, they provide not only facilitators during our meetings and our sessions, but also provide us with direct contact to best practices and resources that we've been able to use during the evaluation. Also, we've been switching from the concept of a teacher evaluation to the concept of a professional growth and development system. Teacher evaluation often has a negative connotation, that it's the process used when somebody's struggling. But in reality, and the real intent of it, of an evaluation, is to, no matter where educator is in their career, to be able to help them grow in their areas of need. Nobody's perfect. Every single one of us has an area where we excel, as well as an area where we might struggle or need additional assistance in. And so the professional growth system is meant to provide educators with support throughout the process. Districts are often very good at supporting new educators through induction programs like we heard about before, and supporting struggling educators through peer assistance, peer assistance and review programs. But often those educators that are doing okay and kind of passing all of the things they need to do, don't always have that extra support. And so we're really looking at developing a system where no matter where you are, educators will have the opportunity to identify areas of need and get the support to help them grow in those areas. Throughout this process, we've also, we've been going now, as Jim said, for about a year and a half. And the first year was really all about research and looking at best practice, when it, practices when it comes to professional growth, as well as hearing from districts who have already been through this process. And so through that first year, we settled on a set of guiding principles that both the district and our SDA team were able to agree upon as things that we wanted to guide our work moving forward as we developed our new system. And so some of those guiding principles included having a system that's based on the California standards for the teaching profession, or in other sets, other sets of professional standards. We have, within SDA, and our district have more than just teachers, classroom teachers. We also have counselors, nurses, school psychologists, speech and language pathologists. They all have a set of professional standards. And so we wanted to start from a common starting point. And the CSTPs are often used in beginning teacher induction programs, so it makes sense for those to be a good starting point. We also talked about the process, including constructive dialogue, that it's not just a, you turn in your lesson plan, your principal comes in, observes you, they write up some notes, and you're done. And you've checked the box, you've had your observation, you've had your evaluation. But really, the opportunity for constructive dialogue, hearing, having the time for those conversations that are so important in guiding someone's work. We also wanted to develop a system that would encourage collaboration and risk-taking, where educators would feel comfortable choosing something and identifying something, an area in which they struggle. And there's not fear of, you identified this area, you're struggling, and now you're in trouble. But by identifying that area, you're going to get the support and resources you need to grow and become a better educator. We talked about that the system will need to include ongoing training, support, and calibration for not only our evaluators, but also for our educators, that it's differentiated, as I talked about before, along the career continuum, that a new teacher might need something different than a struggling teacher, or a teacher that's been teaching for 10 years. Also identifying that a classroom teacher might need something different than a school counselor or speech and language pathologist. We also talked about that the new system needs to consider the complexities of teaching and learning, and that it needs to be committed with ongoing commitment of resources, training, and time. And that ultimately, our last guiding principle is that what other new system, whatever new system we create, we both identify and acknowledge that it will end up being collectively bargained and coming back to the bargaining table to be included into a future contractor round of negotiations. The last part I just wanted to finish with was the input that we've had along the way. We've tried really hard to include all of our stakeholders in this process, including our educators, district administration, and our site administrators, making sure that this isn't a new system that's being done to people, but that they are really a part of guiding the work that we're doing. We started with paper surveys and online surveys where people could go online and answer questions about the past system and kind of what their visions and hopes were for a new system. We had in-person forums that were held at the end of last school year, as well as an online forum where Lamont and I had the opportunity, I guess I'll say, to videotape ourselves giving the in-person forum, but so that people that couldn't attend still had the opportunity to get an update on the system and provide us input. And then finally, I think the most exciting part of the input process, and something that the county acknowledged they had not seen or heard being done before, is we had the opportunity to pull together both our site administrators and our SDEA Association reps to come to an all-day training and input process where they were able to learn about the work, start talking about the work that they could do at their sites, to help this work along as we move through the process. So that was a really exciting opportunity that we did at the beginning of this school year, where we were able to pull the administrators and ARs together that don't often have time to work on these things in, in the same room and be part of the process.
Okay, so where does that bring us today? We are right now in the middle of prototyping five different components that a teacher can show how they, how they made growth. So instead of just a principal and administrator going into their room, and like Lindsay said, documenting what they did, didn't do, the teacher has the opportunity over time, over the year, course of the year, to decide how they might show growth in the area that they've selected. So what we're going to be prototyping beginning in February of this year, the schools, school sites that opt-in are videotaping. So a teacher may choose to videotape themselves, and the teacher has the opportunity to choose which parts of the videotape they chose to show their administrator or their evaluator. It's on up to the evaluator to choose, it's up to the admin, it's up to the teacher or the educator to choose which component of the video best displays their growth in that particular area. Another one would be student portfolios. So student growth over time in a portfolio that would show student growth and how that teacher grew in that particular area, showing student growth over time. Another area would be lesson study. So the teacher would work with, educator would work with other educators coming up with lesson study design that would show growth in a particular area. And they could show that through videotape, they could show that through documentation of a variety of ways. But lesson study would certainly be one. Another one that we're looking at is peer coaches. So it doesn't just have to be an administrator providing feedback and providing support. It could actually as well be an educator next door to you. It could be an educator at a different school that is doing the same thing you're doing in your evaluation or in your growth model. So peer coaches would be another prototype we're looking at. And the following, the last one would be Common Students, Student Assessments. We know right now that we have school sites that are creating Common Student Assessments for the school sites. So this is a way for them to actually grow those common assessments together. So if we have three people in an English class secondary that are all in the growth model, they would maybe decide to all do common assessments together. They would develop those common assessments over the course of the year. They would show student results and how they grew from those common assessments. So those are the prototypes we're looking at for this year. The feedback we get from teachers and the administrators on-site will then help guide us whether those prototypes need to be tightened up, whether they work, whether they don't work, as we look towards the pilot year and the next year. So in 1718, we're going to go for our pilot year. There'll be more schools involved, and we'll continue to tweak and, and just reevaluate everything we're doing based on feedback. As Lindsay said, feedback is key. We've got, received a tremendous amount of feedback thus far, and we hope to continue to receive feedback as far as we go. And then finally, we hope to have full implementation near 1819. That's our goal.
So as you can see, our LCAP goals clearly show our, our work toward the commitment to quality teachers, leaders, and support staff. Our professional development opportunities like the E3 process are very intentional and purposely tied to our stated goals. These commitments ensure that the efforts made to recruit and retain diverse candidates will be fruitful. So through all the, all the, the goal of quality teaching, leadership, and support in our LCAP, we have a collective vision, national recruitment, improved university partnerships, development of our intern programming, a growing our own program, and the systematic approach to marketing our district, our sustained, sustainable strategies, and we're implementing these to meet the goals. And you can see that there are some things that we need to continue to work on. We need to increase participation in, in the Educators Rising Club. And I know that Diane and her, her group have been very committed to that. Increasing the number of scholarship applications that come in. I know that we can do a lot more to get kids involved in the scholarship. It's a really great scholarship program that sustains students all the way through their college career. Re-establishing our district intern program, which was an outstanding program in the past. And then working with our, our communications office to help us with marketing our school district and utilizing our 14,000 employees to actually help us promote the work that we do in our district and make it, put it out there that being a teacher or a district employee is a, a great opportunity in our community to, to be there. And then the evaluation system is just an amazing system that nationally, people are going to be looking at the work that we're doing collaboratively with our teachers union. And so we want to maintain or improve the rate of retention. We're at 93%. That's a pretty high percent of people that stay in our organization beyond five years. That shows the kind of work that our superintendent, our board, and our staff are committing to the people that work for us. And, and we have more work to do, and we have a great team to, to do that.
I want to say thank you to the team. The overall theme of being able to deliver on this particular LCAP goal is that it's, that we are committed to recruiting, retaining, and training the best teachers in America with very concrete, specific strategies that you were able to hear about tonight.
Do we have speakers? All right. Board members, comments? Yes. Chris T. Brewer?
Well, I just want to thank Superintendent Martin, Lindsay, the, the team that's presented tonight, and the team that's been working on these issues for several years now. You know, John and I sometimes talk about, it's a shame that the auditorium's not packed tonight. It's a shame that, that the entire community is not listening, you know, to this work, because this is the most important work going on in public education, period. This is the most important work that's, that's happening in our district, and I do believe it's setting an example for what's possible in, in public education. You know, we've, we've talked, you know, about some of the, the growth that we've seen in our student outcomes over the last several years. Obviously, our 92% graduation rate that's been achieved even while we've raised graduation requirements. We've talked about the extreme drop in our dropout rate, down, we're now what, less, less than 4%, I think. It's really amazing work, reductions in expulsions and suspensions, increases in, you know, student performance on standardized tests, even though we don't emphasize preparing students for standardized tests, and yet we still rank at or near the top of large urban districts in California. We know about the work that, the success that students have had in this district over the last several years, and we know the progress that we still need to, need to make. But it's important, I think, to understand that this work is being done because of incredible focus and creativity and the strength of relationships that we've been able to establish in this district. I think this statistic, then, I thank the team for highlighting it, that 93% of teachers stay in our district after five years is not only remarkable, but, but explains a lot of, you know, what we've seen in terms of student outcomes. The reason that's so important is because Superintendent Martin's entire strategy is focused on building capacity. It's focusing, it's focused on helping people get better at their jobs, whatever their jobs are in this district. And I know Superintendent Martin believes strongly that every person who works for this district is an educator, whether you're a teacher, a principal, classified staff, all the way across the board, you're an educator. And so when we invest in helping you get better, that's how students do better. That's how students learn better. And so that priority of investing in our educators so that our students can achieve better outcomes has really been at the core of what we've, how we've approached our financial strategy. You know, certainly through the recession, through the recession, in the end, we had very few layoffs, you know, as a result of, you know, the work that we did to keep our staff in place because we've invested in that staff. You know, we talk about this, the beginning teacher support assistance that we provide so that new teachers don't have to pay, you know, several thousand dollars. You know, we, we provide that. And, and I think it's important that when we invest in, in our, in our new teachers, we make sure, you know, as, as we've been talking about, that, that we retain those teachers. And so being able to focus on avoiding layoffs during the, the worst of the recession, and that was a partnership, you know, between the, the district and our unions, where people made sacrifice so we could make sure that we could, we could get through that period, being able to retain our staff. And then coming out of the recession, I'm very proud of the fact that we've worked together not only to negotiate this new professional growth system, and I agree with Lindsay's comment that, that's so much more, so, so much comment that that's so much more instructive of a term than an evaluation system, but that we've raised salaries 16 percent over the last several years coming out of the recession, and that we've maintained high-quality, affordable health care for our employees. And even though the increasing costs to the pension system, you know, are mandated by the state, thank goodness that our educators have access to retirement security because it's another way that we make sure that people stay in a profession when we invest in the growth of our staff. And then this work, you know, first, the work to recruit, and I appreciate that. I think, Acacia, you had said that a few years ago, about 69 percent of our teachers were Anglo, meaning about 31 percent, you know, identified as ethnically diverse. And yet we see a statistic here that of our new recruits, that's up to 43 percent. That's a 40 percent increase in teachers who are coming into our district who identify as ethnically diverse. And we've got a long way to go. We know that. But that's quite significant growth already, just in the early strategies that our staff have invested in. And then we see our long-term strategy of growing our own educators from our schools. And it's so exciting to hear, you know, Diane talk about, you know, the work through our college and career tech programs, or through our own future educator clubs and the education fund. All of that, you know, as a strategy to grow a teaching force that can enter the profession. It's exciting to hear Wendy say, debt-free, credentialed, with, you know, guarantees of being able to be hired back into our district so that our teaching force increasingly mirrors our student body. Incredibly important work. And then this work is also around the professional growth system. It's so important that we move forward with that system and that we, in exactly the way that you're doing it, and I know it's the way that Superintendent Martin innovates, it's to take a concept, test it out in a pilot, learn from it, and then take it to scale. And we're seeing that being applied here. So important that that becomes the hallmark of what we're about as a district because we know that we have been in the center of a national debate going on for several years that says, that's not the way you grow teachers. The way you grow teachers is sort of a corporate model that you either threaten or bribe teachers to get better at their job rather than focus on working with teachers in a substantive, real way to grow their effectiveness. So the work that's going on here is the work that will, that is responsible for the gains that we've seen in student outcomes over the last several years. And it's the work that will create stronger and stronger student outcomes going forward. It's real, it's sustainable, it's honest, and I just am so excited to hear the work and so appreciative of the work that our team and our unions and our partners are doing to grow our educators.
Trustee Whiters Payne.
It's so interesting that you would say that about the corporate model. Yesterday, I attended a workshop and someone was presenting and said, I'm from the for-profit world, and the only way I know to get improvement is to give a bonus and you get the automatic results. And to hear this evaluation model, this support model, if you operate from the premise that everybody can improve, I don't care who you are, even if you're the president-elect of the United States, you can improve. And if you move from that perspective of how can I improve, this is an area I need to improve in regardless to where you are, then, and you're supported by a team of your site administrator, your peers, et cetera, then that has to result in improvement for children because it becomes, it supports itself, it feeds on itself, a culture of improvement so that children can learn. So I really am excited about the work that's going forward and look forward to seeing how this is going to roll all the way out. And I also commend you, Acacia, and all of the team for the work you've done. But you mentioned the Ed Fund. With my hat on here, having been a member of that board, please, students, if you hear me, please apply for the scholarships. We give scholarships out, we raise monies every year. We give scholarships, we get very few applicants. Please submit your application. It's online. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing your application. And thank you all for all the work that you've done.
I think Flynn was writing down some information about that scholarship. Where online do the students go? Trustee Whiters Payne.
It's an easy website, sdef.org.
Other comments?
Dr. Evans?
Yeah, well, this is, thank you for the presentation. This is really exciting. And on the board, we can sit up here and say, we want great quality teachers, we want to have a diverse staff and so forth, but yet now we're seeing actually the district administrators and the unions working together to really make this happen. And we've seen in other cases where the district and the state are sometimes catching up to us with the whole common core. We were talking about critical and creative thinking before, and that became part of the common core. We talked about equity in terms of resources in the district, and now we have the local control funding formula. Unfortunately, right now, we're facing a pretty big challenge in the national environment, which is going in the other direction with the appointment of a Secretary of Education who basically does not have a strong belief in public education. So it makes it that much more important that we have a really quality program in San Diego to lead the way for the nation, particularly in terms of what we're talking about, in terms of the whole teacher evaluation system, the old word, but the whole growth and development model so we can show that, you know, we can actually do something that will produce results. And then results are a lot harder to argue with. I think it's a great statistic we have of 93 percent of teachers who had this induction program, you know, sticking with us after five years, which is very parallel to our graduation rate of 92 percent. So I think we can just keep, as you were saying, inching either of those up, both of those up a little bit. In terms of the diversity, I'm glad that you're bringing out the statistics about the changes in the new ones because otherwise it seems like a drop in the bucket from a very big district. And we talked about ethnic diversity, but there's so many types of diversity that we're looking for. And I know there are all kinds of legal rules about what you can talk about in terms of race, or sexual orientation, or pregnancy, or lots of other things. But we need to really be creative to make sure we have a really, really diverse workforce in all aspects. Just taking the LGBT situation, for example, it could be, our district can be more appealing to teachers who are in that community, who if they see a district that's actually working to protect and support the students in that community also. One thing I'm wondering in terms of the whole development from high school to community college, the four-year college and credential, is how closely we can tie this in with the San Diego Community College District? Because we have, you know, partnerships with them, we have the PROMIS program. I mean, we can get very specific about how we want to make sure that, you know, our students who want to be teachers, who we've identified that can go to community college for free and go finish their education for a lower cost after that. So I think in all of our discussions with, I know we have to some point, but with San Diego Community College District, to really keep this as a big point. And one other thing I'm curious about is, in terms of attracting teachers from the outside, how do our, where do our salaries rank? And I know that there's total compensation, there's salary, but certainly a new, the first thing, or one of the first things that a new teacher, potential teacher is going to look at is, what's the starting salary? Not so much, what's the health plan, or what am I going to earn 20 years from now? And can you give me an idea, I mean, I know we've looked at that sometimes, how we stack up in that regard today with the current new salaries?
Yeah. So I'll let Wendy answer the, do you want to give an example of the community college first? And then I can talk, give an example of salary comparison.
You made my heart skip there a minute. I was like, I'm not talking about salaries. So yes, we are in discussion with our community college partners as well as with our local universities. It's just that we are in the finalization of some of those plans, and we're not quite ready to name those partners until we get those agreements all wrapped up. So, but definitely including them.
And to add to that, our pipeline strategies for the student pathways are multiple pathways because we're trying to find multiple entry points for students. So, and there's different supports that go along with them. So we still are, you know, take anybody who meets our goals to work with students in our district. And so you talked a little bit about the ethnically diverse piece, but another thing that we really focus on as we do our initial intake interviews is, how do candidates demonstrate their cultural competency, their work? How do they, how would they be a fit in a larger urban school district? What do they know and what can they contribute to working with our students? So that's a huge portion of our look at diversity, rather than just an ethnically diverse, which we can check and track and mark, but that we also look for other things beyond that in our candidates. And then in terms of the second part, I can give you a story that Erin and I went to Atlanta last February, and people loved us. They, so a comparison to, especially districts in the East Coast, we have, I don't want to say numbers, but our salary is much more. And they were fascinated that we provided the level of health and welfare benefits that we provided. And so in terms of being competitive, in terms of understanding housing comparison prices and things like that, the draw wasn't necessarily financial. There was a financial benefit for them to move. It was more of a question of, do I want to move across the country? So the finance pieces were attractive to people from out of state. From that, we also, one of our strategies is that we offer interviews in multiple mediums. So we do a number of- Every Friday? Or almost every Friday, Erin? Every Wednesday, excuse me, once a week, basically. We schedule candidates who are out of town to do web-based interviews, so Skype or FaceTime or different mediums like that, that allow us access to candidates who in the past, we may not have interviewed because they may not have been able to come to us. So we also are, it's another way that we can connect with people and have them gain some interest in our district and then hire them to come.
Great. And along that line, and I'm not that informed about this, but in terms of the whole hiring process, I mean, there's so many fields where people go in for an interview, and they interview very well, and they're hired, and then they get on the team or whatever type of work they're doing, and they're not necessarily, they do not perform as well as they did in interviews. So what, you know, you can have interviews, you can have letters of reference, but what are the pieces that you use to hire people? I know like, for example, people I know that work in technical fields and computer science and so forth, they'll often go for one or two interviews, and they'll have almost a whole day of being put through technical questions and interviews and so forth. So how much do you really know about the candidates before they're hired?
So for the teaching profession, a lot of that is taken care of through their university preparation program. And then through the work that we do in terms of their references and researching. When it comes to school sites, some school sites actually ask candidates to demonstration lessons and things like that. The other important piece is that once people are hired, there's a time where they are probationary, which is an extension of the hiring process, where essentially, we monitor and support employees in their first years of teaching or in their first years coming into the district to provide them with that development and growth model that Jim and Lindsay talked about, so that people can become acclimated to the district if they're not familiar with our district, learn the culture, learn the work that we do, learn the commitments, and then they're supported through that process.
Well, when you say you have information from the university program, how objective is that information? Because I can imagine a program wants to say, we do great work, and so they're from us, so therefore they're great.
Of course. So they are reference-based. We can see their evaluations that they have through their university programs that are done, not necessarily by the university itself, but by a cohort instructor. And then, what am I missing, Erin?
From the university?
Mm-hmm.
I think the-
Good.
I think the fact that there are references are, not just reference letters, but they are confidential references between the instructors or the college coordinators and us, I think that's important. So we do get really honest feedback, and sometimes it's very, very honest feedback. And so we are seeing a level of references where they seem, they appear very trustworthy and to be a reflection of those candidates.
And then another thing I don't know is, how does the process go in terms of them, of a new teacher being hired by the district versus being hired by a school site? Are they hired by the district and put into a pool and then go out and interview at the schools, or how does that work?
I'll let Tim talk about it because he's been in HR forever.
It really depends on the circumstance. I mean, if you're, if we're looking for a physics teacher at a high school, they're more, they're kind of a rare breed, so we're going to go out and we're going to find candidates, and we might have them go directly to the school site for an interview. And if the school identifies one of the candidates in that process, then they can go ahead and we'll offer the contract to them. For other, we have so many different ways to come into the organization. We have student teachers that come in and work in our schools. Oftentimes, the principals see those candidates before they apply, they've seen them in the classroom. So they're going to be after those candidates for their openings when they come up. But we have a process where we have post and bid, and we have, so, you know, with this early recruitment that we do, and we're looking for diversity, we have to go out and sometimes we're offering contracts to quality candidates early that will meet our diversity goals. And so we're, they're just in a, they're just in a pool of elementary teachers or science teachers because we project how many math teachers we're going to have based on our attrition over time. So we will go out and in our early recruitment, we'll offer contracts to people when we go on recruitment trips to Atlanta or places like that without the principals having been a part of the process. But whenever we can get the principal involved in the process, we do, because we want them to be a part of that. And not only the principal, but the team that works at the school that has to work with that teacher to be a part of that process.
Great. And then just one more thing for future reports, what could be helpful is, besides the information and statistics, would be sort of real-life examples. Like we have this group of, or displaying a couple or a few students who are in high school who are on this path, they want to be teachers, and this is how they're going to get there. Or even this, we did this national recruitment campaign, and here are two or three teachers we brought here. I remember one, I was very impressed, a guy who came here several years ago and was pleading for the continuation of the teacher development of the new teachers program, who had been an attorney in New York and had volunteered at schools in the Bronx and decided to change his profession and was very committed. And when we just see these real-life examples, it gives a lot more flavor of what we're doing. Thank you very much.
I just want to comment that when we talk about teacher shortage, it's kind of like a conundrum almost, because in certain fields, there's not really a shortage per se. But if you're, that's why when you mention physics, if you see a physics teacher, you know, if they're any good at all, they have a job. And some of the sensitive areas where you just don't have a lot of candidates, that's where the real shortage is. Versus in- Versus in areas where you have multiple university, almost every university producing elementary teachers. So, when a person says, you know, they say it's a teacher shortage and I didn't get a job and I have my credential, it's in that specialty area where you really find that you need folks. So, just understand that to the larger public, okay?
Assistant advisor?
Thank you, President McQuarrie. A couple of things, I remember trustee Evans had a question a little bit about the salary comparison. I know Vice President Barrera had just talked about how, you know, over the last many years, we actually have worked very diligently as a board to compensate our educators, to make sure that we can be competitive in the county. And I was wondering if maybe Lindsay could speak to how our salary comparisons rate with other school districts in the county?
So, I don't have exact information with me. I know Acacia talked a little bit about nationwide, that our salary looks good to candidates across the nation, but our cost of living is also higher than many states and counties across the nation as well. When we go into bargaining each year, SDEA, and I've shared it with a lot of the school board members, does a lot of salary comparability research and information. And we look at San Diego County districts as well as large districts across the state. I don't have the most recent information on the bargaining we just did this year. But I do know at the end of our last round of bargaining, most of our benchmarks, we're getting to what we consider median. There are a few, we look at benchmarks, we look at a teacher, an incoming teacher, a five-year teacher with X number of units, a 10-year teacher, a 15-year teacher and a lifetime educator. And those benchmarks, most of them were getting up to median. And then, between then and when we went into bargaining, a lot of other settlements come in. And so, it's a constant changing thing every single day or every single week. We understand that we are a large urban district. It's difficult to be at the top when you have so many. But as close to there as we can get, as we used to be in the bottom quartile, we have moved up into, for most of the benchmarks, what we would consider kind of that second quartile, approaching median at most of the different areas. We're in the process of doing our research now, looking at what does the most recent contract settlement, where does it put us? My guess is that it's going to be very similar to where we were at the end of the last round of negotiations, which would be just below the median level for those areas.
Thank you. I think that this is just a lot of very important work and I'd like to echo the remarks of Vice President Barrera, talking about how, it's kind of interesting that, you know, every year we go through the budget process, which really is just an exercise, it doesn't really mean anything until May, when the state and the governor give us some more information. But that's the only thing anybody cares about. They don't care about the fact that in San Diego Unified, we're revamping our teacher evaluation system. That we're creating a radically different way of helping teachers to get better and throwing away the old teacher evaluation system. And that's really important things that the public and our community and our parents need to know about. And also, the fact that we're doing a phenomenal job of helping our new teachers to get prepared. And I just can't thank this board enough for not cutting the beginning teacher support program during the most difficult economic period. I know that that was up for consideration, that's something that we talked about, we deliberated about in our economic decisions in the past. And I'm just, tonight's presentation on staff about how the beginning teacher support induction program is helping those new teachers to become more effective and to maintain their career path, I think is, it just reaffirms the decision of the board. So, I just want to say thank you very much to all the staff and all the work that you're doing. Keep it up, good job.
Thank you. I too want to acknowledge the statements and questions and the comments and the position that the board has made and to acknowledge the presenters tonight on this very, very important, very important topic. We, this district has long recognized that a high priority is the quality of the instruction teaching process. Research demonstrates that if you want to have a major impact on student outcomes, you need to address the quality of instruction, the quality of teachers. That's why we put teachers at a high priority. That's why we want instructional leaders and principals who know how to work with teachers and help them grow and develop. And that's why we want wraparound services that can provide support to those teachers and those schools to make sure that we have quality instruction in every classroom, in every school across the district. Some of the numbers I've heard is that we lose roughly 140 teachers a year through retirement. We're hiring roughly 400 a year. And so, that's a tremendous need. And we're not the only district out there having that tremendous need. And so, we need to have an edge. We want to make sure we are attracting the best, we want to make sure that we're reaching out, identifying the best. And if we can grow those from within in the number of ways that have been recommended, I think it's absolutely crucial that we identify students early. We develop the program for our future teachers and work on that pathway. Also identifying current staff, current staff members who are classified, who may want to be teachers, who have been working with students in schools and we know that they have the heart and the spirit and the skills to go forward and we want to support that. I met with military veterans and they, too, and their families and their spouses are very willing and interested in working with schools and we have an opportunity to reach out to them as well. In addition, we have our visiting teachers, our substitutes, who are demonstrating and doing excellent work and they'd love to come on full-time and be here. So, we have a number of people who want to work here. We want to make sure that we are hiring the best, that we are supporting them in the best way possible and that we are retaining them. And we are at a very, at a 93% level and that's the, you know, commendations all the way around. And another related area was brought up about the, we have teachers on the other side of the, on the East Coast, who would love to come here. Have we given some thought to maybe some housing support, some moving support, some way to, some incentive to get them here and give them some support to make that transition? So, we can pull and I absolutely agree that this will become a magnet. What we're doing in terms of growth and development is something that school districts across the country and teachers across the country are looking for. They're looking for more than just a salary and fringe benefits and we're in the median range and getting better in our own neighborhood. But I think we could also begin to take a look at, this is the place to work. This is where you can demonstrate and grow your profession and to have a major impact. Our graduation results definitely show that when we hire and maintain the best, our students do perform the best and we're getting those best results. So, it is excellent work, it's hard work and difficult work and I just want to commend you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you to the whole team.
So, we are on F. I would like a motion to adopt the board consent agenda, items F1 through F6.
So, move.
Moved and seconded. Comments, questions, any public testimony request? If not, cast your votes. All votes have been cast, it is unanimous.
That's this size binder we just got through.
And I tagged. Moving through G, G1, District Advisory Committee on Comprehensive Education. We have our semi-annual report and would please welcome Susie Reed, our DAC chair, to present the item. Susie, welcome.
Good evening. I have kind of a lousy voice, so I apologize. Good evening, Board President.
I can clear you up.
You can hear me good?
I can hear you well.
Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Martin. Happy having a good week so far. Let's see here. All right, so, now that I got the first one out of my system back in June, I'll be a little more brief this time. I hope that's big enough, I know you've got it in front of you, but I realize it's a little small. Just some updates from the DAC following up from June. We had a school site council website checklist go out to our different members, to our members. One of the things I talked about in June was creating some consistency across the board with the school sites as far as their websites. When the district changed over and things got kind of discombobulated with the changeover and moving things over, we wanted to, the executive team wanted to put in, together something a little more streamlined so people kind of had an idea of what to expect. And also, it made it easier for parents to be able to go online and see, you know, there are other ways of being involved other than PTA or associations. And governance is one of those things that most people don't talk about until they have a student and then they're like, "Oh, my gosh, there's governance, I can be involved in different ways." So, we were, we're still keeping up with some of the schools, with most of the schools. Every meeting or so, reminding people to fill out their website checklist. So far, I've got about a dozen schools who've gone over their checklist and have been consistent on making sure things are up. And our executive team is also looking at different things we could do. One of the ideas we came across was if there's any way for our IT department to create kind of a, kind of a form page for SSCs and for, mostly for just consistency and equity across the board. That way, you know, if you have a student at Barnard in Mission Bay or a student down at Choyes Mead or at any school site, they can pop on the website and see school site council and have it be consistent from school site to school site. Because I know it's hard, sometimes the ID, IT department at one school site is essentially the principal or parent volunteer. So, I know that supports for the school site IT is a little, a little new, let's just say. I'm sure it will be improved at some point. But I think that that was something that we would really like to, as a DAC executive board moving forward, maybe talk with the IT department. I know we've pushed out several different things, like the report bullying button. And I know it's easy to make standard forms on internet sites nowadays and most schools use the district's web medium. And only maybe some high schools don't. So, if we can be, make it a little more consistent, that would be nice. We were really excited in September to be able to welcome the new executive director of the Family Engagement and Community Engagement Office. And so, we're really excited to hear what might be moving forward with that department. I know they have an event tomorrow night ahead of our DAC meeting, so I'm looking forward to seeing what they've, what they've got and what some of the improvements and meeting some of the new resource teachers. We're also really looking forward to hearing a little more about school site family engagement plans. I know that might be a little more down, down the road. But family engagement is so important when it comes to informing people and also just getting membership. I mean, we can't, we can't fill SSCs and can't fill DACs unless we're engaging our family. And that's something that we are federally mandated to do, so it's important. It should be a high priority on the list. We've got, we're really hoping to see those Ballard Center updates. When we leave, especially in the wintertime, it is pitch black outside. And usually, I am one of the last people to leave. And so, if I'm leaving at nine o'clock and the building site supervisor is inside cleaning up and I'm walking out by myself, you know, it's a little nerve-wracking. So, we're really excited to see some lights out there and maybe some upgrades to the Ballard Center and maybe some marketing, just, "Hey, we're out there." We had, one of the things that I've noticed, most SSC members, school site council members are also site governance team members. And a lot of times, they sit on the same committee. We've actually worked with some different principals over the past couple of months to try to make sure that they're holding those meetings separately to not blur any lines. Because oftentimes, I think it's easy to just have one meeting to cover both groups, but they actually are two different entities and cover two different, they even have two different types of makeup as far as the membership. So, we had Labor come out and thanks to Christine Houston, who came out to talk to us, talk to the DAC and answer some questions, because there is no formal training for parents for site governance team. There's no real place to go and get more information. And the only place we have access to information about that is through Labor. And Labor doesn't generally tend to just answer the phone and talk to parents who are concerned about what's happening at their site governance team. So, it was important for us to make sure that there is a little more training happening for our SSC members. So, we had her come out and we've got some, some different things we want to make sure we're kind of just plugging in over the course of the year because sometimes people have questions to me that have nothing to do with school site council and their site governance. And so, it's making sure that we understand that they're two different things. And so, it would be nice for parents to be able to get some of that training. So, we're going to probably at least talk about that a little bit more as a DAC because the questions are kind of constant. So, knowing we have someone to talk to there is really nice. Let's see, what else? Attendance update. So, I talked a lot about attendance in June and that was something that I think it really is, it would be a very, really good measure on our LCAP as far as parent involvement. Because its majority is, we're trying to get parents involved in those. We're trying to see less or fewer principals show up as the DAC representatives. Maybe fewer teachers show up and more parents, because that's who are trying to engage and those are the stakeholders we really want to hear from and we want to make sure they're informed. So, I put together a quick list of schools that we, we've seen. Our attendance is roughly around 22% right now. Rosters, SSC rosters were due on the 28th of October. And right now, we only have 137 rosters approved out of 180 schools. And so, we've got, whether it's they can't get enough parents to volunteer, whether they're still struggling with finding a chair to sign off on those rosters. They're, usually it's they're out of parity, which means that they've got plenty of teachers, but they don't have enough parents. And that tells me right away, red flag, we're hurting on parent engagement. At least parents, you know, it's about getting out there and making sure that they know that it exists and what the roles are for the SSC. And of those, there's roughly 30 schools that are having a hard time getting their rosters approved, three of which are high schools. And these are high schools that all receive quite a bit of Title I money. So, if there's no SSC going into budget time, budget books coming out in January. So, that's a bunch of principals who have to really kind of, you know, run around trying to fill those positions. And it shouldn't be principals begging their, begging their parents to join SSC. It should be a democratic process. And it's not becoming a democratic process when they're struggling to get people to join school site councils. So, and I've told parents and told principals in the meetings, you know, if you need help getting parents, come talk to us. Maybe we can come out and do something. There's always something we could do, just a matter of figuring out who needs the help. Because it's not a matter of about, you know, "Oh, bad principal, you haven't gotten your SSC filled." It's a matter of, "Okay, well, what can we do to help you get it filled?" Because if you're struggling with getting parents involved, what can we do to help? That's why I'm hoping the face-to-face can help us really kind of push that as well. The big, the big thing for us next is the Title I DAC or rather, the Title I allocation recommendation. We started a work group back in December last year, back in January rather. I had some meetings with parents. We had County Department of Ed come out and talk to us about Title I. There are still changes to Title I. Literally as we speak, I'm still getting emails about the Every Student Succeeds Act and changes they're making and different legislation that they're working on. So, we're still following that, but we did want to get ahead of it and make sure that we come out with an allocation recommendation for the board. And after November's vote, they voted to change it to $4.50 from what we're currently allocating at a $5.50 decrement. And I hope that, looking at your faces, you understand what I'm saying when I say that. Because the Title I, it's a lot of explaining, it's a lot of telling people that this is how we've been doing it and we can change it. But the justification was equity mostly. And looking at those schools at the very bottom who literally get $64 a student. And it's hard to do a lot, you can buy like a computer intervention program for $3,000 and some schools are left with just that. So, and trying to make it a little more equitable on each side. So, that is the recommendation from the DAC and from the general, I wouldn't say it was unanimous, but it was, it did pass. So, and you'll see more notes, I'm sure the DAC will, after tomorrow night, have a memo coming out to you regarding more on that. a memo coming out to you regarding more on that. And moving ahead, LCAP updates. We haven't had any as a DAC body yet from any district staff. We are really looking forward to getting some. I know that we had a workshop last weekend and LCAP planning meetings are pushed back a little bit more. But the DAC is that, is that one of those two bodies that need to have that LCAP brought to them. So just putting that out there. Like I said, again, more changes coming. So we're, we're trying to keep up with it and poor Debbie Foster is trying to keep up with it and make sure we know exactly what we need to do as far as allocation and changes that might come down the pipeline. Area superintendents. I love our area superintendents and I just, I wish I could see their faces more. They, I noticed that in years past, they were the ones we went to when we said, hey, we're having trouble getting, you know, different schools come to the DAC meeting. Well, I know now area superintendents are really focused on instruction. They're in there, they're, they're the ones going out and checking out those learning cycles. Well, they might be able to come back and tell us, hey, you know, this school's doing this and it's a great intervention. This is a great best practice. The DAC, we are trying to provide a forum for best practices. And I'd love to hear more about different instruction, best practices, different things they're seeing as far as the, the learning cycles. We do, are trying to, to get some learning cycle updates coming to the DAC just so, I mean, this, another reason why attendance is so important. There is no real pipeline for communication between the district and especially through, for our school site councils for Title I, for LCAP. There is so much information and there is very few channels and methods in which to get them to people. So having people come to the DAC meetings to get that information, we usually get it first. I know stuff before my principal does and it's kind of cool and it's, it's a neat process. I just wish more people would take advantage of it. And so we're still struggling to make sure people come out. But it's all about parent engagement. And so I'm hoping moving forward, we can really partner with FACE and partner with the new executive director and just make sure that we're all communicating and making sure that there is a constant stream of communication to get more parents involved and to help those schools that are having, that are struggling with it. Because Title I, parent engagement, parent involvement is a big chunk of that Title I money. And so if we're not working to try to improve best practices when it comes to parent involvement, and I see those, those dollars at the end of the year, a lot of it is parent involvement funds. Either we're not figuring out how to spend it or it's just kind of one of those extra things that we're not really thinking about it until it's time to make sure we transfer money around and make sure everything balances. So if we can, if we can make sure that we utilize that money and not have it roll over, it would be excellent. But so far, so good. So this year, we have officer elections tomorrow night at the DAC. So I have a feeling I might win by landslide. But we do have two people running for our second vice chair. So I'm excited to see who, who ends up in there. They're brand new people, so I'm excited. We have people excited about Title I. It's unheard of. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Do we have any public comments? Board comments, questions?
Questions. You know, you're talking about the attendance at the DAC meetings and then there's also the issue of getting them involved at the school level. And I think it's, it's very difficult, it's, it's hard enough to get people to go to their school.
Yeah.
And participate and it's that many more times harder to, to go to a district-wide kind of meeting. I mean, it's happened somewhat with cluster meetings in terms of going to your school for meetings, but now there's another one for the cluster. And I'm just wondering if there is a way, if we can rely a little more on technology to, to actually have some different kinds of dissemination of information and meetings, you know, where, where each school, a place where different site councils could post what they're doing and other site councils could see it. There could even be videos, you know, showing certain things. You know, again, I just appreciate the fact that it's really hard to get people to come to these types of district-wide meetings. And yet there, there's probably a lot of ways to, and I'm not saying not to have any, any meetings, but in between and instead of maybe quite as many meetings, if there were just a lot of dissemination of information in both directions.
That would be really nice. Our DAC website has a lot of information on it. We've been trying over the last two years to try to get training, just something simple as training posted online. We've gone back and forth with, you know, creating a script and that, that didn't really work because by the time we got around to possibly doing it, the script was out of date and things, Title I has changed. ESSA came out. So, I mean, really, you know, there are different school districts who are doing it, who are putting videos online, who are making that kind of content available to people through their websites. And so I've, I've put it out there and I'm hoping that we can, can, I'm not sure about holding meetings.
Maybe it would be, it would have to be very easy to use and, and quick to update and so forth because obviously you can put static information online and it just, just kind of sits there, but.
Right, well, and that is over my pay grade. So, but I do, I need to talk to someone from IT about something we could do. And I'm working with our monitoring and accountability office to try to do something like that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I love your idea.
And then I also, I mean, I appreciate the fact of what you're looking at, at the decrement. It's always a difficult topic. But there is a point at which some of the schools at the very bottom get so little money that I've even heard principals say sometimes I'd rather not, the paperwork and the bureaucratic stuff, just to get that small amount of money. So that's one option or the other option is to, to make it a little bit more at the bottom so that something meaningful could be done.
Right.
Either way, but that's, that's a problem.
That's the hope.
Yeah, so I sit on the SSC and the SGT meetings at my high school as the student representative. And I just wanted to compliment you guys on, because you guys did come and definitely separated our SSC and our SGT. And you really explained to the leaders of both of those committees like what happened. And that was just really helpful at our school.
Excellent. And we have resource teachers who are willing to go out. We just had Susan Weinchenker at our school today giving us a breakdown on exactly what your roles are, what you should be looking at for your budget and your, your school scores. And, and it's, it's wonderful and it's really nice to be able to have the resources that we have. Thank you.
Right.
Excellent.
Other comments?
I just want to say, I mean, we talked about future teachers, but I also want to tell Flynn that every two years we have openings on the school board. So she might consider that also.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yeah, trustee, we're sort of opening.
Yeah, I just want to echo John's thoughts. And Suzie, I really appreciate that you continue to highlight this challenge of representation. I know it's something that, you know, is, is a real priority of yours. And it seems, I mean, this is, you know, this is the age-old issue, obviously, with the, with the DAC and actually just forming strong school site councils. And I think maybe it's a combination of the DAC working with family and community engagement and IT to come up with some, some solutions that, I think, I think we have to realize that it's going to be very difficult and it has been very difficult to have people from throughout 200 schools or 100 and, what is it, 180?
180.
180 schools show up at a single meeting at a single location, you know, at the same time. So I think trying to identify ways through technology and through, you know, allowing for multiple opportunities for people to participate, particularly parents at, at the different schools and especially, you know, the schools that are least represented, I think is going to be important. And then, you know, obviously the issue of representation and the recommendations around the Title I allocation, it always goes hand in hand. And it's, and we know, you know, how difficult an issue, you know, that that can be. And we know that when we talk about maybe some additions to schools at the 41% level, that money comes from somewhere and it's likely coming from schools at the 95, 100% level. And, you know, the concept of, you know, equity and equality, I mean, there's, you know, it's different definitions of equity. So I think that for us as a board, the degree to which we can really engage in the recommendations on Title I allocation coming from the DAC, it is linked to the representation of the DAC.
Absolutely.
Right. And you know that and, and you're committed to that. So I think this issue of, you know, trying some different strategies that maybe we haven't used yet, maybe other districts are using to get more of the voice and more participation from the underrepresented schools is going to be really important. And, you know, better representation, I think, leads to recommendations coming forward that, you know, I think are going to be received well from the school boards.
I hope so. And I want to make sure that if they need help getting people, that at least we are providing some sort of resources to do that, too.
That's right.
Yes, thank you so much.
I want to thank you for your service and your work. This is a very good report. I know at the beginning you said, oh, it, it seems like it's too small. Most of the time, for our sake, less is more.
Good. Yes, I saw that binder.
Because what you did is you just, you know, consolidated it down to the most important points that we need to be aware of. And that's really important. Some of the comments that I've had, I've been going to the, some of the DAC meetings over the years and then I check back with the schools that never sent a representative that month or sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And a lot of times they say that it, just the drive, all the way down to Old Town at night in rush hour traffic, you know, it's just, it's a lot of difficult challenges. And so some of them have suggested maybe there's some way that in this century, we could maybe do, break it out and do teleconferences, like at different high schools, like a north, a south and a central. And then, you know, we obviously could still have it at the Ballard Parent Center or wherever, you know, is technologically advanced enough to do it. And then have other sub-meetings in their neighborhoods that, where they could teleconference. And that way they're, they're, they're in the loop, you can hear their voice and they could still vote.
Right.
And that's a big challenge. And unfortunately Scripps Ranch does not have any schools on the DAC. Because the DAC is for schools that have, you know, a certain level of poverty.
Right. And we actually have opened it up to all schools in the district. They all have the ability to come and vote.
To vote.
They, they aren't allowed to vote on Title I matters.
Right.
But we do, we do get a lot of other.
That's the point of the DAC.
Yeah.
Is to, is to, you know, give the board advice from the, the schools that have, that receive the Title I funds on what your guys' recommendations are to allocate those Title I funds. So, yeah, I mean, all schools can attend any, you know, committee meeting, but Scripps Ranch doesn't have any votes on Title I allocations. But, yeah, so, but thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it.
Just to piggyback on Kevin's idea and what Richard said, one possibility might be, if it could be coordinated, to have the, the site council meetings at the different schools at the same time and have some, having part of the meeting being what Kevin was talking about in terms of being a, you know, a 30-minute teleconference or something like that. So they're sitting there in the comfort of their school close by, but there's some sort of district-wide input. So these are, just, just as we've said, because you've been dealing with this problem for so long.
I love it.
What do we have? What, what do we have as a district? Because it's so routine now. FaceTime and Skyping and all the other things monthly. I meet with folks up and down the state with GIRA, Project GIRA. It's not difficult and they see you. I mean, it's, it's not hard to do, so surprised we're not there.
Savannah Orford, you had a comment?
I recently attended a conference up in Huntington Beach for rare disease and for, we had several breakout sessions. And for each breakout session they had, it was pretty low tech. It was just, you know, video cameras. But they also were able to make it so that people from around the country who weren't able to attend were able to comment in real time. Even if you looked at something as simple as Facebook Live, which is, you know, very low tech, very, you know, cheap to do. And you can have on the, you know, on the, and even if people were able to add those SSC or, you know, SGT meetings to kind of coordinate that with the DAC meetings, that you guys might be able to get some more feedback.
Yeah, I like that.
Anyway, you can do our board member meetings from home.
We'll have to make sure the brown and green and all those orange acts and purple acts are all good with that. Because there's some things where you can't vote electronically, so there are some things we'll probably have to work out. But I love the ideas. Thank you. Because if we can't use this technology, what good is it for?
Yeah.
Thank you, Suzie Reed.
Thank you, Dr. McQuarrie.
And also for enabling our students' voices to be heard tonight.
Yes, thank you both. I enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
President McQuarrie, can I move G2, G3, G4, G5 and G6?
I'll second G2 through 6.
So I, I hear that as a motion moved and seconded. Is there a discussion, comment? Do we have any? And do we have any speakers?
You do not on those items, but could I just ask Dr. McQuarrie at item G4, if you could read into the record what it also includes? It's right there.
In, in G4, we'll now, item G4, which revision to the salary plan?
Yeah, you could just read that sentence.
So G4 is revisions to the salary plan for confidential and non-represented management employees, which includes the district's executive leadership. And so the motion would be to approve recommendation.
Thank you.
For revisions as well.
And just a quick comment on that due to a mistaken public comment. Any raises that we've been given have been consistent. There isn't a difference between the different bargaining units or the non, the executive and confidential and so forth. So I just wanted to make that clear because it mentions here about non-represented management employees, but there's not, it's not a different salary increase for them from what other employees are getting.
Thank you for the clarification. Any others? It's been moved and seconded. G1 through G6.
G2.
G2 through G6.
Six.
Thank you. I'll cast your votes. All votes being cast, it's unanimous. Thank you. H1. We'll now hear item H1, the external auditor and annual financial statement for fiscal year 2015-16.
I'll move H1.
No, second. It's been moved and seconded. We have Colleen Harvey and Patrick Ambrosio stepping forward, who are members of our Audit and Finance Committee chaired by Dan McAllister, who cannot be here tonight. Dan is also the county, elected county treasurer. And we're very, very pleased to have our representative, our committee here. Also on the committee is trustee, Dr. Whitehurst Payne and myself. And thank you for representing the committee and making the report. And available for questions, we have Matt Nethaway and Crowe Harwith, who are available as well for questions.
Good evening. This is Pat Ambrosia.
Good evening. Yes, it's nice to be here for President McQuarrie and also all the members.
And I'm Colleen Harvey. It's a little tall.
Thank you.
The Audit and Finance Committee was asked to review the external audit report conducted by Crowe Horwath LLP for the 2015 and 2016 fiscal year. The committee commends the district finance staff for receiving an unmodified opinion from the external auditors. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion a district can receive, so congratulations. Between January and December 2016, the committee met five times and was provided with periodic progress reports on the external and internal audits. Of the three prior year, meaning 2014, 2015, audit findings, one has been fully addressed and solutions implemented and the remaining two items, which are ASV internal controls and attendance accountings, were carried over to the 2015-16 audit report. The external audit report for 2015-16 discussed three findings, two of which are recurring, as I just mentioned, and one new finding related to kindergarten continuation. The committee is particularly impressed with the decreased number of findings in the ASV accounts. The finance department and internal audit staff have implemented multiple training classes and resource materials for school staff and students over the past year. This was done to ensure that proper procedures and district policies are followed. It is the expectation of this committee that with continued training and staff support, the managers, employees and student representatives will continue to show improvement with ASV internal controls. On Monday, November 28, 2016, the committee unanimously agreed to recommend that your board accept and approve the independent auditor's report for the 2015-16 fiscal year. And we concur with the recommendations contained in the audit findings. and we concur with the recommendations contained in the audit findings. Thank you for your time, are there any questions that we can answer?
Before we go to board questions, comments, we do have one public comment, do you want to do that now? It's H, I'm sorry, it's H3, I'm sorry, we don't. All right, my mistake. Board?
Well, I just thank the Audit and Finance Committee for your service to the district, and of course, thank our finance staff, and congratulate our finance staff for an unmodified opinion.
So I'm thrilled that the external auditors are giving us an unaudited, I mean, an unmodified, which in educators' speak, that basically means that the external auditors have given Sandigo Unified an A+ for financial management, so thank you very much. Also, thank you to all of our volunteers on our Audit and Finance Committee for your service, thank you.
I understand this is the seventh perfect audit in a row, or audit that was rated as as high as it can be high, it can be, for seven years in a row, so it's an ongoing pattern, speaks to the, the effort this district is making in order to show due diligence and fiduciary responsibility for the, to our taxpayers and to our program. This is fiscal and programmatic audits, and we are, we depend upon the outside auditors and to, to make their excellent, to take a serious look and examination of issues and concerns, and blending that with our internal auditor, we then, those reports presented to our finance audit committee, and then they are then presented here, and we're now doing two reports, a semi-report, which is, this one, which has been ongoing for years, and we, and then we've added another one at the end of the, because we've added, this is, this one is a new one, and then, and then we have the one at the end of the year. But thank you so much, it's, we meet, and we speak, and we, we review the books, and we, and we have outstanding results, which speak to the, to the financial health of this, of this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
So, I think we have, we had a motion on the floor, and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Cast your vote. Accept the report. And it is unanimous. H2. H2 is external audit financial performance proposition S and Z.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have speakers on H2? Hearing none? Any comments, questions, similar? Yes.
Yeah, my understanding is, again, this is both the financial and performance audits for, for our bond measure, Prop S and Z, and I understand, again, that we're coming in with, is it opinions with no findings in, in both cases, with a financial and performance audit, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So we did a financial audit of the bond, and for that, we have issued an unmodified opinion.
Yep.
So again, the same opinion that the district received, exactly what you'd be looking for in this report.
Yep.
And then we do a very extensive performance audit for the bond as well.
Yep.
Spent a lot of time interacting with the ICOC, and going through the procedures with them, and again, as a result of that, the procedures are what you, what you'd expect. We had no findings in relation to those procedures.
Well, and I appreciate that, and again, I congratulate Superintendent Martin and Lee Dolgeroff, and, and our entire staff. Again, what that, what that means is, we're not only having our projects come in on time, under budget, spending the money that, that the taxpayers have made available, in, in a responsible way, but we're also building exactly the projects that we went out to the voters and said we would build. So we produced, in both cases, Prop S and Z, in the voter guide, a detailed list of projects, that we said, if you approve Prop S in 2008, Prop Z in 2012, these are the projects that we intend to build. And once again, you know, with the performance audit, coming back in an unmodified opinion, the auditors have, have, working with the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, have confirmed, we're building exactly the projects we promised the voters we would build. Is, is that fair statement?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, statements? Good? Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Excellent. Let's see, we need, it's been moved and seconded to...
Oh, Mike, you need to vote.
Oh. Everybody voted with me? Keeping me on track, it is, ah, it is now unanimous. Excellent. H3 is another action item, and here we do have a speaker, but let's, we will now hear item H3, the fiscal year 2016-17 first interim financial report, Education Code Section 42130, and resolution in the matter of intent to declare qualified certification of first interim and balanced district budgets for fiscal years 2017-18 and 2018-19. Can I have a motion?
Yeah, I, I move staff approval, and just want to reiterate, reiterate that the staff recommendation is to do three things, to approve our first interim financial report, and our resolution reflecting the district's financial status, to certify the district's projected financial outlook for the current and subsequent two years as qualified, and to direct the staff to prepare specific actions to implement solutions to balance the 2017-18 budget.
So Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you, President McQuary and trustee.
Do we have a second? I'll second.
Okay.
All right. Yes.
Thank you, President McQuary and trustee Barrera, for the context of what we're asking for tonight for approval. For those of you who have not met, Patricia Cook is our interim CFO, and she's up here tonight to present the first interim report. I want to make sure that we also say it's important to remember that currently this year, we have a balanced budget, and this is our first interim, looking forward to next year, and none of the solutions that we'll be talking about tonight are for this current year.
Thank you, Superintendent Martin, board, board members. I'd like to start by recommending and thanking the staff of the finance team, whose excellent work was reflected in the unmodified audit that you just received, and is also reflected in the reports that are before you this evening. I can say without any embarrassment, since I've, I'm so new, that they deserve all of the credit for all of the hard work that's been done over the last years, and especially the last few months. As Board Member Barrera has noted, we have three recommendations for you this evening. I do want to point out what it means to have a qualified first interim report, and that means the district may not be able to meet its financial obligations during these, in the, not this year, we're fine this year, but in the two subsequent years of the multi-year projection. The state requires us to make a finding like this, of positive, qualified, or negative. This is a benchmark or a milestone for you to be aware of the potential for very difficult situation in coming years, but I also know that you are prepared to make the decisions necessary to close that shortfall. We're going to talk a little bit about the factors that go into planning and building our budget, the chief of which is really the kids, and so district-wide ADA is very important in both our revenue and in our expenditures. And what these, I'm sorry, sort of hard-to-read lines show, is that at every level, TK3, 46, 78, and 912, the district is experiencing a slow, steady decline. So our overall enrollment and hence ADA, which is what we're primarily funded on, has been slowly declining over the last few years, last several years, and this has a huge impact, because revenues tend to go down faster than expenditures. It's, we lose money for every child we lose, but it's difficult to cut staff, cut services at a commensurate rate, so it is always difficult to be in a declining enrollment situation. The next chart just highlights, and this is not a one-for-one difference, the decline in overall district ADA is not attributable entirely to charter schools, but charter schools in the district have been steadily growing, although flat from 1516 to 1617. There are some other assumptions, major assumptions, that go into planning our multi-year projection. The, after ADA, the next, usually most significant factor is the state COLA, but ever since the implementation of the local control funding formula, the state COLA has taken kind of a step back in importance, because the governor set a target for 2021, and we are moving much faster toward that target than COLA alone would provide. However, I want to point out to you a very significant part of our revenue assumptions for 1819. As the gap has closed, we've been getting very large infusions of funds, but the gap is nearly closed. You'll see in the next-to-last line, by 1819, we're at 98% full funding of the target, and the year-over-year change in revenue from LCFF is just over $1 million. So, we are almost to the closure of the gap, and we cannot expect to see the big infusions of funds that the initial implementation of LCFF brought us. This chart, which is maybe more confusing than helpful, demonstrates, if you look at the column that says annual allocation, shows the year-over-year change between 1718 and 1819 of just over $1 million that I just referenced. On the far right, because I know the board has expressed interest in this, in the past, is an indication of how much more money we would receive in a specific year if the gap were closed. So if in 1718, the governor proposed to close the gap all the way to the target, we would realize an additional $13 million. It seems very odd, I know, that in the previous year, it would have meant $40 million. Keep in mind, the target keeps moving, and our enrollment is declining, and so there's an interaction that goes on here, but just so that you know, if by some chance, the governor decided that he wanted to close the gap earlier than predicted, that would only generate an additional $13 million for us in 1718.
Just quickly, but on the next year, it's, it's, the, the gap is going down every year, and then the next year, 18, it goes up.
Yes, and it, we, it is, it is, I want to say, almost a mystery. We spent a great deal of time this afternoon making sure that these numbers were all correct, as far as we are able to project. Because the target moves with ADA and unduplicated counts and COLAs, but at the same time, our ADA is going down, there's an interaction that occurs, that depending upon what year you're looking at, the year-over-year change is different, and the amount of the gap that is not yet closed is different. So you'll see, it's, it seems an anomaly. But even the target at full implementation changes every year.
But I'm still having trouble, because in 1819, it's, the allocation is 991, the full implementation is 1.011, which looks like about 8 and 12, looks like...
But you have to compare it to the target for that year.
It's 20, okay, it is 29.
So the 991 compares to the billion 11, a remaining gap of $20 million.
Okay, I see it now.
Okay.
Just leave it there.
We, we went over the numbers very carefully to make sure they were right, but they still are very difficult to explain. On the expenditure side of our multi-year projection, these are the primary assumptions that go in. First of all, step-in column increases for both certificated and classified, this year's salary increase have all been factored into the projection. I want to particularly call your attention to STIRS and PERS. I know you've heard this before, but I am going to say it again. Because of the state's unfunded liabilities in both of those retirement funds, the rates that employers must pay are going up every year until they peak out at just under 20%. This is a huge burden on employers, and in particular, it's a burden because there's no additional funding to pay for it. So LCFF, which has been very generous in some areas of our budget, has not been very generous in areas such as this, where we have these pressures over which we have no control, same with inflationary pressures in areas such as books and supplies and so forth, and there is no additional funding for that. So this is a very difficult situation for school districts to find themselves in. Drop-down to health and welfare premiums, while this year, we're anticipating a 7% increase in the out-years, we shaved that slightly to a 6% per annum increase. You see the amounts that we are now projecting for the budget shortfalls of 116.6 million in 1718, and 49.8 million additional in 1819. We've shown you the special ed encroachment, which staff is endeavoring to contain, but it continues to grow somewhat. And then, the last item, bottom right-hand side, you may be aware that the routine restricted maintenance commitment was reduced in the years in which the state was in constraints, and so we were as well, but it's going to pop back up to 3%, which is $39.3 million Once again, just to highlight what's happening with CalSTIRS and CalPERS, I mentioned that the employer rates will top out at just under 20%. I guess that's a little bit of an exaggeration for CalSTIRS, it's just over 19%, but these are huge increases from the 1314 base year. That must be absorbed in some way in our budget. This chart is a summary, once you take the income assumptions and the expenditure assumptions, and put them all together, again, in previous years, I understand that this chart has highlighted the last line, which is 000, but I think it's more important to highlight the fact that in order to get to a balanced budget with a 2% reserve and the other required reserves, it will be necessary to make the reductions that are highlighted at lines four and five. So how do we propose to solve this problem? Staff has been working for some while on identifying areas of the district's budget that are potentially changeable, reducible, in order to reach $117 million in reductions, and we've categorized them in three broad groups. Primarily, the central office, we were looking at potential $44 million in reductions there. Primarily centralized support services, these are services to schools that are deployed from a central location, about $21 million there. And then, the third group, which is primarily going to affect school sites if we have to go that far, of $52 million. We note that many, many, many of the items that we are contemplating are negotiable, and so we must sit down with our associations in order to make these things happen. I'm going to skip to the next-to-last bullet first, next, and say that we will reconsider, especially the third group, if the fiscal outlook improves. And so that's why it's been structured in this way, so that we would kind of go back up the list as resources became available. However, it is our intention to move ahead on all of them, because the timeline is so short, and we cannot wait for a miracle to happen. We have to proceed as if the situation is as we've described it, so that we are ready with a balanced budget on July 1st. And as I've already pointed out, notwithstanding making all of those cuts, if that becomes necessary on an ongoing basis, there will be additional cuts in 1819.
Since this is a, the worst-case scenario?
This is a present-case scenario, Dr. McQuary. I, I hope it's the worst-case scenario. We certainly have to take the situation as we understand it today, and project that forward, and take action as if that's going to happen. I'm going to briefly talk about a few upside and downside possibilities, and I, so I can't say this is entirely the worst case, but it is a serious situation that we must address. On the next slide, we have identified 12 categories of reductions. These go across the buckets, as we've been calling them, buckets 1, 2, and 3, or priority 1, 2, and 3. These are the kinds of strategies that we're pursuing, that give you a little more of a sense of what we're up to. I, we note again that many of these are subject to negotiations, but some of the broad categories, for example, of deferring action, where something is planned, but, or maybe just getting started, that we would contemplate a large expenditure for, we may propose that we defer that until things are a little bit better. We're also looking at opportunities to transfer from the general fund unrestricted to restricted funds, what we used to call categorical funds, or even other funds, so that we can relieve the general fund unrestricted. I need to talk for a minute about cash flow, because one of the things that you're well aware of, is that the district needs to borrow temporarily every year, since our revenues tend to come in, in large bunches with, in November and December, and again in April, when we all pay our property taxes. And, so in order to smooth out the jerky way that revenue comes in, and the consistent way that expenditures go out, we temporarily borrow every year, and in the nature of 100, I believe it's 175 million, maybe 100... I believe it's 175 million, maybe 195 million, and we will be doing that, we've done it this year, we will do it again next year, and we pay that back as the other, our own revenues come in. But I want to point out to you that in 1718, even with $117 million of solutions and a TRAN, we are skating on thin ice. You will see that in July, even with a TRAN, even with the solutions, we are down to $9 million in cash. In other words, we need these solutions in place, not just to pay our bills, but also not to go negative on cash, which is similar to paying our bills. If you look at the next slide, you'll see that without the solutions, we go negative in July, and it gets worse, and then it gets better, and then it gets worse again. In other words, the district would no longer have the cash necessary to continue to operate. I just want to point this out to you because it is one of the many reasons why it's essential to take action in a timely fashion. So what is our timeline for taking action? There will be the monthly LCAP presentations and community advisory meetings, as you've had this evening and as I understand go on in the community throughout the year, as ways to incorporate the LCAP with the budget, as we are required to do by state law and good practice. Tonight is December 13th, and you're taking action on your first interim report. On January 24th, the Governor's proposed budget will be presented to the Board. That budget will be out, earlier in January, we will have a pretty good idea of what the Governor is offering in the way of school funding, and how that might help improve the picture for us. We will begin bringing you detailed budget solutions for action in January and February. As we are able to finalize our understanding of what we're proposing to do and the impacts that they have, we will be bringing those to you in chunks, if you will, so as not to do the entire thing all in one fell swoop. The budget workbooks will also be coming out in that timeline. March 14th is a critical date for a couple of reasons. One of them is the second interim report, by which time the county expects to have seen action by the Board to balance its budget. But also what's critical is, as you're well aware, March 15th notices for certificated employees and 60-day notices for classified employees should layoffs become necessary. Those layoffs need to be identified by mid-March. Board will, because it's qualified, will be receiving a third interim report on May 9th. The Governor's revision of the state budget will be out in early May. Once again, he may change his proposals for this, the coming fiscal year, because by that time, tax revenues for the state are pretty solid, and they have a better handle on what the financial outlook is. We will hold a public hearing on the adoption of the budget and the LCAP first reading on June 13th, with adoption of both of those on June 27th. And on that date, the Board must have a balanced budget for 1718. I promised that I would tell you a little bit about some things that might make things better, but also might things, make things worse. We are hearing that the improved financial national outlook and state outlook could lead to higher state income, and as you know, that because of Proposition 98, improved state income tends to flow in large part to schools, so we have our fingers crossed about that. We also are hoping for a slowing in the decline in enrollment. We are seeing enrollment projections earlier this year than we have in the past, but we haven't seen them yet, and we are hoping that the rate of decline might slow somewhat, so that would improve the picture that we've presented to you this evening. On the other side of the equation are some risks. As you are aware, we've lost some unduplicated enrollment this year due to a reduction in school lunch applications. Staff has been working very hard to understand exactly what happened. It seems as if a number of things happened that have reduced our school lunch applications and therefore our LCFF unduplicated count. So we also will see, that leads to a potential loss of LCFF revenue. We haven't quantified it because there is still time for verifying student eligibility. We are seeing less than anticipated savings in early child education and special ed in the current year, although the administrators of those programs are working very hard to see to it that the solutions that were anticipated for the current fiscal year are implemented to the extent possible. We are also anticipating the possibility of some reduction in federal funds in the 1718 fiscal year, and some changes in the way that Title I funds flow to schools, so we are still trying to understand exactly what that means. And then, as Dr. Evans mentioned earlier, there is some potential for changes in immigration policy to have an impact on our children, and that could potentially, though we can't quantify it clearly at this time, lead to a decline in enrollment that we wouldn't otherwise have expected. So my closing remarks are sort of a restatement of what I've already said. The first interim is based on things that have already happened and the guidance we are currently receiving from the county and from the state, as well as our own projections of how we are doing in our expenditures this year. This report becomes the base for our multi-year projection, so that is the base for 1718 and 1819. We will, of course, be updating you when the Governor's budget is released in January, but as I mentioned, if some strategic layoffs are necessary, we will identify those by mid-March. Again, an update in May, should updates warrant and things improve, solutions will be reconsidered, so that action is taken to balance the budget that is presented to you for adoption in June. And that brings me back to the recommendations from staff that were at the outset, that you approve the first interim report and resolution reflecting the financial status for July 1 through October 31st. Certify that we are presenting a qualified financial outlook, and direct staff to prepare specific solutions to, specific actions to implement solutions to balance the budget.
Thank you, Chris. Before we go to Board questions and comments, we have two speakers. First one was submitted timely, Frank Simbukakis, and then followed by Citizen. Is Frank here? No, Frank, don't see Frank one. Frank Simbukakis, two. Citizen, you're on.
$117 million budget deficit with a qualified rating would not be happening if the Board members sitting up on the dais had been good stewards of our taxpayer money. It's not the first time you've been here, but now you have no more land to sell. With millions and millions and millions of dollars have been pouring in, parents are still paying for crayons, instruments, field trips, and other educational needs, and you're going to take $52 million out of the schools. That's your fault. And yet, the superintendent's salary ballooned to $285,000. That's more than the Governor of California makes. More bureaucrats were hired for the Ed Center, mushroomed. If there had been better planning by this school board and the superintendent, the district wouldn't be facing $117 million deficit. You had millions and millions and millions of dollars pouring in that you never had before, and because of poor planning, you're looking at $117 million budget deficit.
Thank you, Citizen. Board comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a simple statement here. In fact, we have been good stewards. We have balanced our budget every year, and we, when we're talking about a deficit or a shortfall, it's important for people to understand, sometimes people think, well, this happened during the very difficult economic years, but it basically happens all the time because we're required to issue a preliminary budget plan in December, when we don't, when the actual budget is not approved until June, when we do not even know exactly how much revenues we are going to receive. So what we're doing is an academic exercise. We're taking a conservative estimate of how much money we're going to have, and it always comes down. Without us cutting, it always comes down. It may come down $1 million, it may come down $50 million. We don't know exactly how much is going to come down, but then we will deal with it. And I want to praise the superintendent and staff for very carefully planning any cuts that need to be made, starting far away from the classroom, and having that as the last resort. But again, there is no, there is no plan for mass layoffs. We always balance our budget, and we don't have a huge, we have the required reserve fund, we don't have a huge reserve fund because we're using our money to educate our kids.
Comment? Trustee Visor?
Yeah, thank you, President McCrory. This school board has always balanced our budget, and the other thing that I think is very important to realize is that this is incredibly early in the process. I mean, these numbers don't even take into effect, or I'm sorry, these numbers don't even take into account the latest figures from the LAO up in Sacramento. If you go to lao.ca.gov, you can see plain clear right here, just, this just came out, that right now, the state of California is looking at an $11.5 billion surplus, and that the LAO is projecting for the 1718 school year, an increase of almost $3 billion in Proposition 98 funding to schools. That translates into about $60 more million for San Diego Unified Schools next year, and that's not even included in any of these numbers. So there's a, it's still very early in the process, and as our CFO had mentioned, you know, we still are waiting for the Governor's budget proposal in January, which will be a completely different situation in my humble opinion. And at that point in time, then we can look at, you know, the different kinds of decisions that we as a Board need to make. And I really hope that a lot of people will go to the lao.ca.gov, go down to Chapter 3, Figure 16, and look at what the state of California is telling us they're looking at for the budget projections for 1718, because it's a completely different picture than what we just saw in our presentation tonight.
Yes. Trustee Visor Spain, Dr. Spain?
School budgeting is a, is a complex process, and I come at this from a different perspective because I was the first, in the first group of teachers in the state of California who ever received a notice of layoff in 1973. Bunch of us, 100 of us, had been recruited, we talked about recruiting, came from Virginia, all over the nation, and that was the first group here in San Diego, where we had to give notices to teachers. As you can see, I've been in San Diego City Schools now for many more years than that one year. But it is an exercise that the state of California requires of us to go through at some point in order to balance our budget, potentially. We don't know what our revenue is going to be. We are guessing, we're getting information from Sacramento. The superintendent and her staff are traveling there to find out. If folks want to really do something exciting, then tell the Governor and the legislators to find money to fund us one year out, then we won't have all this back and forth. We get our budget for the year, and it stays the same, but since we don't have that, we have to go through this exercise to ensure, yes, we will make those tough decisions, and we will balance our budget. That's a commitment.
Great. Any other, no further, further comments? My point is very similar to what has already been said, and our practice is not to be redundant, but I just want to reiterate that this, this is an exercise, which is a very serious exercise, and we're being asked to go through an exercise before we have all the information. But we want to do our, our due diligence and make our best effort to prepare a budget based on incomplete estimates. And it does appear that there are some positive things on the horizon, and I know that we need to take, be conservative, as this district has been, and we want to be, be prepared. And I want to thank the staff for presentation, for the effort that it takes to, to take a look at our fiscal health and our budget. We will have, it's like, three interim reports. That's the opportunity to take a look at the budget that was presented, the budget, the interim report that now is examination of how that budget looks, given what we know. We'll have a second interim report, and then we're followed by a third, and then finally by a fourth final budget where it must be balanced, and it always has been, and I'm assuming it will be this time as well. We'll look, we look forward to the Governor's projections, which will set the, set the goal, the goals for us and help determine the, the degree to which we have to make some serious, serious cuts. At this point, it's very early in the game, and we're doing our very best to use the information that we currently have to make the best estimates possible in order to move, to move forward. Our point is, our priority is the instructional program. That's why we have the three-bucket strategy, is to make sure that the cuts that need to be made, if that does happen, will, the last cuts will be made, will be those that are closest to the classroom. We'll look at central services, look at support services, and then classroom-related, school-related budgets will be last on the table, and we think those will be the first to be pulled off as the budget projections improve. So we had a, we had a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? If not, cast your vote to approve the recommendation, and, which is to approve the first interim financial report and resolution reflecting the district's financial status from July 1 through October 31, 2016, and certify the district's projected financial outlook will be qualified, and then direct staff to prepare specific actions to implement solutions to balance the 2017-18 budget. Cast your votes. All votes have been cast, and it is unanimous. Except staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you. So we have moved into the pull consent items, I-1, I-38, and I-42, and Citizen, he wants to come forward and, and present on each, each of those. Two minutes. What? Thank you.
Field trips?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, I-38?
Yes. Speak to them all. Okay. Field trips. I see that the attached documents show that students are still paying for their field trips. Field trips are part of the educational experience, the curriculum and the extracurricular. San Diego Unified should be paying for those field trips. It's the law, and a new tactic is now being called the optional field trip, and it's very frustrating to have a parent's email me and call me about children who are crying because they are afraid they're going to be excluded from the field trip. And if a school plans it, they've got to fund it. It's the law. Now, the practice right now is to, is to browbeat parents for donations. They're not donations, folks, they're fees, because these parents are being told, you will pay it. Even for field trips that these kids are being graded on, parents are having to pay for it. I just don't understand, with the millions and millions of dollars that came into this school district, little kids can't get a field trip, a bus for a field trip to the tide pools. It's ridiculous. Okay. The, the expulsions, you're not reporting the expulsions to the public. Now, I'm on the email list for the document that accompanies these expulsion reports, and that needs to be released to the public. It needs to be posted on the agenda when you approve this consent item. It's very important, and it gives people information about the safety and incidents that are going on in the school district. And finally, the ASB certificates of deposit and savings accounts. These are supposed to be spent by the students, and they're still sitting in savings accounts. Morris High School has $50,000 sitting there, waiting for students to use that money. San Diego High has $147,000. La Jolla High School, $200,000. Point Loma, $190,000. Bell Middle School, $61,000. That is the money that students raised with their fundraising and have not been given the opportunity to spend. They need to be given that money so. They need to be given that money so they can use it for their school activities.
Thank you. Any other speakers? So, in motion to approve I-1, I-38, I-42?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Is there additional discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, cast your vote. All votes have been cast, unanimous. I-1, I-38, I-42 are passed. And so, we have -- any additional speakers? None. So, now we do elections.
President McCrory, could I say something? Just a comment about this. Because I think we should have a discussion rather than just playing rock, paper, scissors, where we each write something down, and then it gets announced anyway. I think we've seen recently with the city council and the palace intrigue of who is the council president and so forth. It's a little different on the school board, because we're all equal members. We can all, with an additional board member, place an item on the agenda, so basically, being a board officer is really a position of service. We've had a tradition, an informal tradition, the last several years, of rotating the officers on the board. Obviously, the most important is the functioning of the board, but we found out through rotation that every single person that's up here is perfectly capable of running meetings and serving in that role. So I would just like to see if there's, you know, on the board, is there just a general consensus about rotation? Richard was present first a while back, then I was present, then Kevin was present, then Mike was present, which just leaves Dr. Beiser's Payne, who apparently is willing to wait a year before she steps in. But if we were to follow the rotation, we would just basically go back to the beginning and have Richard as the president, and then I would serve as vice president, and then the following year, we would commit to, even though it's not official, we would commit to having Dr. Beiser's Payne serve in that role the following year as one of the board officers. So I'm just putting that out as a general idea. I mean, the issue of rotation is not, there's no rule about it. I mean, it's just something between us, but if there's any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I really think that you have some very good ideas about rotations, and I think that that would make sense for, you know, Richard Barrera to rotate into the president of the Board of Education for next year, especially, he would, you know, his leadership has always been very effective. But we always haven't done that. If you remember, when I first got on the board, I wasn't, I didn't rotate into a leadership position. Richard, I think, held the president position for two years and then rotated. Scott Burnett did not share the support of the stakeholders in the school district. Scott Burnett did not receive the support of a lot of educators and teachers and classified employees, and did not necessarily share the voice of the board. And so, when he was vice president, he did not rotate in to be president of the board. And so, there's a lot of different factors that have gone into that in the past. You know, fortunately, the five trustees on the school board, I tend to think that we all tend to work well together. And I don't think we're as polarized as the San Diego City Council is, where they, you know, they have clear lines, and they're always jockeying for their agendas and things like that, and then they've got the mayor, and they've got vetoes. They tried to pass a minimum wage increase so people could afford to live in San Diego, and the mayor vetoed it. We don't have a mayor. So, you know, I think that that's really important, too. So I think that there's a variety of different things to take into consideration, where, you know, in some senses, in some instances, it makes sense to rotate, you know, up into that position, and others, it doesn't necessarily always make sense to do that, so.
And I agree with you. I mean, I was talking about rotations, a general concept, but there are exceptions, and I think certainly in the one that you mentioned, it was the consensus of the board, that it was better not to rotate that particular board member into being president.
Well, I tend to, if I remember my history correctly, I tend to think that that trustee saw the writing on the wall, realized that the teachers in the district were lobbying very hard against this person from becoming the president, and that that individual, in fact, did something that was quite surprising to a lot of us. And that person, knowing that they weren't going to be rotating up, actually nominated me for a board position in his place. And so I thought that was kind of interesting. So yeah, there's lots of different dynamics, you know, but I remember how different things have played out over the years up here. It's interesting. It's interesting. But you're right, we all, it doesn't matter, you still get one vote, right?
Right.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on the rotation. The idea of the rotation from vice president to president, I think, makes sense. There's that continuity for a period, and to me, that would make sense. Who would ever be the vice president would be a discussion, but I would definitely see the rotation, whoever is in the vice president's chair would think it would make sense for them to roll up to be president, and that would seem to work in most cases. Given that, I would support nominating Richard Barrera for president.
Second?
Motion and second.
We don't really nominate according to bylaws, but you can say whatever you want.
Oh, we don't nominate?
Not officially.
Is it a secret ballot?
It's a secret ballot until Cheryl Moore's vote comes in and says how we each voted.
All right. So I guess what I'm saying is, let's move forward on the process and cast a vote for president.
How many times do I get to vote? We've got like five votes here.
I want to thank our students for hanging in.
Yeah.
This is historic.
But just a point of order, President McCrory, what you did is something that actually we have done many times. We have had various members of the school board, you know, say that they would like to say that they would like to support somebody.
All right. All right. Well, it also gives the opportunity of persons being considered to state whether, yes, they are interested or not.
Right.
I saw Richard nod his head.
Yeah, that was a technicality about the nomination, because it's the same thing to say, "I'm supporting this person."
Right. You ready to read?
Sure. So it's a unanimous decision. Trustee Barrera has been elected president.
So then, breaking tradition again, I am inclined to support Kevin Beiser for vice president, and for the support and help that he's provided me, the leadership he's provided on the board, and for his commitment and knowledge and expertise. And we have other qualifying candidates as well. I'm just openly stating where I am at this point, if Kevin is interested.
Yeah, I would be very interested in being a part of the board officers with Richard. Yeah. I think it'd be a great opportunity.
Any other comments, discussions? If not, let's go to the yellow paper. Cast your vote.
I'll just say that I'm willing to serve also as vice president.
Thank you.
Trustee Beiser Payne has voted for trustee Beiser Payne. Trustee Evans and trustee Barrera have voted for John Lee Evans.
So...
You'll need to re-vote.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from John and from Kevin, why they think they deserve my vote.
Do you want to accept that invitation?
Well, first of all, you voted for yourself. Are you willing to serve as vice president? No?
No.
Because I will change my vote to support you.
I really don't want to do it this year.
Okay.
So that was for a matter of discussion and debate.
Yes.
Any other choosing to respond or reply?
Well, I mean, I think I already said what my position was in terms of just rotating in the order that we've done it before. I think everyone here is qualified in serving for either office.
The reason why I would really appreciate your vote is because I look forward to the opportunity to work with Richard Barrera as a board officer. When I was a board officer, the first time I worked with trustee Evans, and then after that, I worked with trustee Foster, your predecessor. And I've never had the opportunity to work side by side with Richard in the board officer meetings and things like that, and I think it would be a really good opportunity, something that Mr. Evans already has done many times for a couple of years. In addition to that, I really would like the opportunity to help make sure that our agendas include the things that we need. One of the things that is not on the agenda, you know, sometimes are updates on, like, bullying reports. We've talked about this again and again and again, you and I. We haven't received any updates on how are things going in terms of school safety yet, and I think that's a conversation we could have in the board officer meeting. Just a really short, quick update. And then there's a variety of other things that I really would like to work on. So, you know, if you vote for me, I would really appreciate it, and I won't let you down.
Next vote.
All right, let's continue the process. Second round, cast your vote.
Trustees Beiser, Payne, McCrory, and Beiser have voted for Kevin Beiser. You have elected Kevin Beiser as your vice president.
Congratulations. They deserve it. So that, and then they take their positions at the next meeting?
Actually, it's official tomorrow.
Oh, official?
The term begins tomorrow, but that would be the first meeting that they would be sitting.
Can I just say a big debt of gratitude to Mike McCrory, and we owe Mike a big round of applause for your service this year.
I would also like to chime in. I think in my six years on the school board, President McCrory has done an amazing job of running the meetings, keeping the professional decorum, managing some of the challenging situations that may arise from time to time.
We had challenges?
But I think that you've been a phenomenal leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to have served, will continue to serve, will want to be where I can be in order to provide a difference. We have important times ahead, we have our challenges from the national level, we have our budgetary challenges here statewide, and we are always focused on our local issues in our neighborhoods, and I'll want to continue to support the board and this community in every way that I can so we have quality schools in every neighborhood and quality neighborhoods around every school. Thank you for this opportunity to serve, and we go forward. This meeting is adjourned.
All right. Thank you.
Pass the gavel. No, it stays right there.